Mr. Chairman, I believe we have all of our members, all the DRB members, and we've got at least the first applicant.
Okay, so we're ready to start?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order then. Before we start, I just want to just a couple of housekeeping items. But this is our first virtual meeting and it's likely to go a little bit longer than what we normally see when we're in council chambers meeting. Just reminding everybody to please try to keep our comments brief as possible as we can. Also, the staff will generally be controlling the microphones to one person at a time since it is being recorded. Hopefully that'll work out okay. For our applicants, ask that...
Thank you for the audio.
Sorry? Perhaps it's that that you limit your comments to 10 minutes, that you have a main representative to speak for your project, and that when it comes to your turn to speak that you identify yourself for the record so that Teresa gets that. And that if somebody other than the main representative on your side needs to answer a question or something, if the main representative would identify that person before they speak so that the person controlling the microphones and cameras can do that. And for the board, again, just being as concise as we can. If a comment's been said before that we agree with, you don't necessarily need to repeat it and just say ditto, whatever. Normally, after staff does their presentation, I ask if we have any questions for staff. Instead of doing a round of that, I instead will go to the applicant for their input. And then when we go to around the board members asking for input, any questions you have for staff, just ask them at that point. And we'll do at least a second round. So, you know, there's a fear of missing a comment or somebody says something later that you want to weigh in on. We'll do a second round again just to make sure everybody's inputs gotten. I believe that gets us for the start. So Teresa, if you would, do the roll call. Or actually, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you would, do the roll call.
Mr. Whitmer?
Here.
Ms. Foss?
Here.
Mr. Strecker?
Here.
Mr. McAllister? Ms. Remke? Ms. Remke? Okay, so I see Ms. Remke is on and she's unmuted.
Is she also on her... Needs to disconnect from...
Debbie, this is Chris Darnell at the town. Would you please hang up your phone? We're getting a lot of feedback on our end. Do you have audio on your computer? And just hang up your phone.
She's logged off the phone.
Debbie, can you tell us if you're present, please? Debbie, can you please unmute your computer? Okay. Mr. Chairman, because we are, we know that Debbie's on the line because we see her, we can move forward with the roll call.
Okay, please do.
Hey, Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Guntman?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, just moving on to the agenda, does staff have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, there are no changes to the agenda at this time.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Guntman, a second by Mr. McAllister to approve. Now, I will ask if anybody has any changes to the agenda that you state them when called upon by Teresa. She goes through for your approval. Otherwise, just state yes or no. Teresa, if you would, do the roll for approving of the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke? Okay, we don't have Ms. Remke's audio at this time, so we'll move forward. Mr. Molesky?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Guntman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes from the March 10th meeting. I may have a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Guntman, a second by Mr. McAllister. And just as with the agendas, Teresa goes through to get your approval. If you have any changes to our comments regarding the minutes, if you would note them at that time. Otherwise, state yes or no for approval. Teresa?
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Remke. We are at the approval of the minutes at this point. Do you have any comments or...
No, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Guntman?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, moving on to citizen comments. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, public comments concerning the agenda items were submitted electronically via the town's open town hall portal. The public comment period closed at noon yesterday. All comments were provided to the DRB members for review and made a part of the official records. I believe there was one comment in total. Citizens who wished to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting were notified to call the board secretary. There were no requests from citizens to speak on this agenda.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Moving on to unfinished business, our first item, alteration addition, Oaks Villas. If staff would do your presentation.
This applicant, this is the Oaks Villas, DRB 000413-2020. This application was tabled at the March 10th DRB meeting with agreement from the applicant, so additional information could be provided to the DRB for review. The scope of this project is to paint all the building balconies, gates, front doors, front door trim, front door overhangs, rafter tails, clubhouse trim, and pool fence, currently a red maroon, to Sherwin-Williams 6159 High T. The stucco is to be left, the natural tabby. In addition to painting, the faux shutters will be removed. The work will be complete in one phase by the POA. Staff recommends approval as submitted. So you see on the screen now, the project site is outlined in red. Highway 278 is running on the top of the screen sort of diagonally. On the right, you can see the Sea Turtle Marketplace development. Does everybody have an idea of where we are?
Yes.
I would assume if, just as a point of, just as a point of interest, on the diagonally below the site, on the bottom left, is the new development on Christian Academy site where that new multifamily development will go in. The screen up here now is the site plan for the existing development. You can see the pool and pool building in the lower left-hand corner. This is a photo of the existing, we're going to run through some photos of the existing architecture. You can see the shutters and the color that they are right now. The rafter tails here in the front door. Just some more views of the architecture, existing buildings. This is the pool house. The trim at the top and around the doors is currently that red maroon color. You can see the fence in the back around the pool. Again, that's that red maroon color that will be painted by High T. At your last meeting, the balconies in the back and the gate were in question. This is what they are, what they look like, and what they're painted. Again, staff recommends approval as submitted.
Thank you, Chris. That's all from staff?
Yes, sir, that is all from staff.
And just one clarification from me. If I understood reading the email correctly, so applicant is now proposing not to phase it, and the, these gates and porches would all be included as part of the painting now, correct?
That is staff's understanding from the applicant, but I will let the applicant, that's a good question for the applicant, let him address that.
Okay. With that, I guess is if we have the applicant present, if we can turn it over to him for any additional comment to staff's presentation. And again, just to reiterate the, I think he wasn't here when I started at the beginning, that we limit applicant presentations to 10 minutes.
Michael, are you there? Michael, the line check?
I think he's muted.
Michael, will you please unmute your computer?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yes, we are now, there will not be phasing. We're just going to do it in one, one project, all the wood surfaces at one time.
Okay, anything else to add to staff's presentation? No?
No, no, sir. That's, that was it in a quick nutshell.
Helps us out, thank you. So we'll start with board discussion, starting with John Molesky.
I think it looks great. Looking forward to it, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Michael.
Question for the applicant. Are you going to power wash the tabby stucco?
Yes, that is a part of the project, yes.
Okay, because my only concern with removing the shutters is the variance in color behind what's going to be behind the shutters. But other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. And I'm glad it's all in one phase.
Thank you, Michael. Moving on, Mr. Whitmer?
I'm good as submitted.
Ms. Foss?
Did you hear me?
You did not. I think you were muted first.
Sorry. I'm going to submit it as well.
Thank you. Ms. Remke?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, Mr. McAllister?
I think it looks good as submitted.
Thank you. And I agree as well. I don't have any further comments. So with that, well, we didn't have any comments that round, so I don't believe we really need to make a second round. Do we press?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay, so then do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. Regarding DRB 000413-2020, the Oaks Villas, motion to approve as submitted with the notes that the submission includes power washing of the existing tabby surface and the May 12th email indicating that all maroon surfaces are to be painted in one phase, not multiple phases. That's it.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. McAllister, a second by, or rather, I'm sorry, a motion by Mr. Guntman, a second by Mr. McAllister to approve as submitted with the notes that it includes power washing of all the tabby stucco and per the May 12th email that all maroon surfaces will be painted at the same time and not be phased. Any further discussion? With all, with that, we will, if you go around, we will vote. And instead of me calling, I'll ask Teresa to go through each of you and vote either yes or no. Teresa, if you would, start.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Guntman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the motion passes unanimously, none, all in favor, none against? Thank you. Moving on to next alteration addition, Executive Center. We have staff to do your presentation on that.
Yes, sir. Just as a point of, this, I don't, it's not order, but just as a point to the board members, after the second, you will all be unmuted so that if there are any comments on the motion, we'll be able to hear it, just to confirm that. Does every, if every, if anybody doesn't understand that, please let me know right now. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Executive Center, DRB 000224-2020. I'm sorry, let, let staff confirm that the applicant is online. And I understand the applicant is online, so we'll move forward. This application is for a color change to update the Executive Center. The proposal gives each building one of three different colors arranged in a 1-2-3 pattern, beginning with the unit, I'm sorry, pattern from unit to unit in a clockwise formation. The colors will begin at unit 112 with Sherwin-Williams 7059 unusual gray, then unit 113 will be Sherwin-Williams 7047 porpoise, then unit 114 will be Sherwin-Williams 7045 intellectual gray, and unit 115 repeats the pattern, starting with unusual gray. The doors and windows will be Sherwin-Williams 7069, which is iron ore, and the trim, soffit, and gazebo will be painted Sherwin-Williams 7043, which is worldly gray. Please note that this color scheme that I just outlined is revised from what it was in your packet, but you did receive an email earlier about, regarding this, and it was revised after discussion with staff and coordination with the chairman. Based on this new color scheme, staff recommends approval on condition the plan is submitted illustrating the different main building colors or a unit schedule with the main building color for that unit specified. On your screen, you can see the site outlined in red. In the upper left-hand corner is Caligny, I'm sorry, Seapine Circle. Running diagonally on the left-hand side is Pope Avenue, and on the far right, you can see the very corner of New Orleans. Does everybody have a idea of where we are? If you do not, please speak now. Okay, assuming everybody knows where we are, I'm going to run through some photos of the development. You can see the balcony on the existing building here. This is one of the units, so you can see it would receive one of the color schemes, just that whole unit right there. Again, you can see how the building is broken up. And the pop-out from that adjacent building, that adjacent suite that had the balcony, and then the, the suite adjacent to it has a window that pops out. Kind of looking down the line so you get an overview of what the architecture looks like. Again, that window popping out. In the courtyard now, I believe, looking at the building. Back to the parking lot, looking at outside of the building.
There we go, yes.
Okay, and this is the proposed color scheme. I know this doesn't scan as well as in real life. Hope those of you that had access to the color deck were able to look it up. But the proposed color scheme is basically on one, one page of a fan deck with the exception of the unusual gray. Again, staff recommends approval of the revised color scheme with the condition that there be a, some indication of which color will be on which suite. And that concludes staff's comments.
Thank you, Chris. Just one question for me. I know, or I think in one of the original reviews, staff had suggestions of the bump outs that you'd shown being painted a different color from the base building is, what's staff's suggestion on that now or thoughts?
Because of the color scheme, it becomes more difficult to, to get the colors that are different enough but in still analogous and paint those bump outs. So at this time, staff is suggesting that they just move forward with painting the bump outs and the main part of the building the same color. There was no indication from the applicant that they thought that was a good idea or agreed with that. But staff would be open to whatever, whatever the DRB suggests.
Okay, thank you. And one thing, one of the photos I didn't see is when I visited the building, I guess, is there's the little alleys that lead from the parking lot to the inner courtyard, and there's like additional bump outs in those. And in my mind, I guess, and currently, of course, with the stucco repair that's going on, they are different colors, whether they were originally or not, I do not know. But I could see where it might be, help break up the mass of the wall if they were a different color and with all the building colors being the, in front of me at the moment. But the worldly gray, I think, was used at the gazebo but isn't used as a map, a building mass, possibly that could have been used for that. That's just an initial thought from me. So that, I guess, I will move on to the applicant, if the applicant's still with us, to see if you have any, anything additional to add to staff's comments. And if the applicant wasn't here when we started, again, we asked that, we limit applicant presentations to 10 minutes if possible, that when you, you state your name so that Teresa gets it for the record. So is the applicant? I think she may be muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Our plan was to paint each unit an individual color, and the bump outs would be the same color as the unit. Originally, that was always the color scheme. The only reason the pop outs or the bump outs are a different color now is because of the stucco repair.
Sorry, anything additional to add to staff's presentation?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will move on to board discussions, starting with Michael Guntman.
Good, sorry, but could, could the applicant, please, or Chris, either one, please go through where the four colors are again?
Yes, so each, each unit, you want to go, Chris?
If you want to address it, you can, go ahead.
Okay, so each individual unit, which each building has about four to five units, so each individual unit would have a different color, and it would be three colors in a rotating clockwise pattern. So that brown unit there would be one color, the gray colored one next to it would be the, the next color and so on. And then for the gazebo and the signs at the front and the back of the building, they would be in the worldly gray.
Worldly gray is the gazebo. What about the handrails and the windows? What were those?
Iron ore.
Iron ore, that wasn't on that little thing that Chris, sorry, I'm a little confused. Trying not to be, let's see here, I took a picture of it. Okay, the thing that Chris put up had worldly gray for 7043, intellectual gray, porpoise, is that what that says? The next one, 70...
Yes, sir.
What's the number on that? 70...
7047.
Thank you.
7047, and then the unusual gray, 7059. So those last three colors are the rotating colors?
Correct.
And the worldly gray is the gazebo? Okay, now, I'm sorry, one more time, what color will the handrails and windows be?
Iron ore, which was submitted with the original color submission.
Okay, are those the only five colors that we have? I have to make the, I have to, if we make a motion, I have to make the motion, that's what.
Yes, sir, those are the, those are the five colors.
These are all the colors? Okay, all right. And could you please give me the number of the iron ore, Sherwin-Williams?
It's 7069.
7069. Okay, that's all the questions I had. I agree with staff's comments, which are, the color palette is fine, we just need more definition on, we need a schedule, basically, that you could take a big picture of it and put up in the corner, SW 7043 with an arrow to this one, and another arrow to that one. You can do, I don't know if you're watching the previous submittal, but they just had arrows on photos. Would be enough, I think, to satisfy the requirement, but I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, Michael. Moving on to Mr. Whitmer.
I'm fine as submitted. I like having each individual unit be an individual color, and if they submit a plan showing us that, I'm fine with it as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Foss.
I'm fine with it. I agree with staff comments and the comments that the two other board members have made. I think it would look busy if we had the bump-outs different color, since each unit's going to be separate. I'm good as is.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
I'm also good with the revised colors, and no additional comment.
Thank you, Ms. Remke.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with this, with the facade colors. I was wondering what colors the soffit and the downspouts will be. Are they painted to match each building?
I think the applicant is muted.
Megan, are you muted? Check your mute.
No, I shouldn't be muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, the soffits and the downspout would be painted the same color as each unit.
Okay, I'm good with everything, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maleski.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we need some clarification. It was staff understanding that the soffit would be painted the worldly gray, and the trim, the soffit, and the gazebo would all be painted the worldly gray.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. The only thing we really wanted was the downspouts to be the same color as the buildings, just so that they're less noticeable. So if the soffit should be the worldly gray, that's fine, too.
Okay. Mr. Maleski.
Yes, I agree, approved as submitted, looks great.
Thank you, and I will, I guess, this time, do a second round, just to see everybody's, you know, that we have clarification on the soffits being worldly gray, potentially, what your opinion is on that. So we'll start over with Mr. Gentman.
Yes, I think the, a constant soffit color would be good, so the worldly gray, and the downspouts, I don't care, either way, they can match the building or match the trim, either way's fine with me. I think generally, the board prefers that they're painted the body color, so that they go away, but I'll, I'll listen to everybody's comments and make a motion as such.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whitmer?
Downspouts, body color, I agree with that, that would be my preference, and worldly gray on the soffits, good to be consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Foss.
I agree, worldly gray for the soffits and the downspouts, the color of the building.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
I'm in agreement with what was just said.
Thank you, Ms. Remke.
I'm also in agreement with what was just said.
Thank you, and Mr. Maleski.
I agree as well.
Thank you, and I do as well. So with that, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Gentman?
I have a question for Chris. Chris, was this buried in the emails somewhere? I don't remember. Was the, the visual schedule that we're going to request, was that for staff review, or is that staff and one DRB member review? What was your recommendation? You okay with a staff?
Recommendation? Recommendation would be just for staff review. I think we understand what the board is looking for, and can execute that without bothering you.
Okay, good enough for me. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Let's see here. Regarding DRB 000224-2020, Executive Center, motion to approve with the following conditions. The color scheme is approved, and I will go through the colors just to make sure the correct scheme is on there, because there were two iterations. The correct color scheme is Sherwin-Williams 7043 worldly gray, which will be on the gazebo, the trim, and the soffit. Then the three rotating colors are 7045 intellectual gray, 7059 unusual gray, 7047 porpoise. The windows and railings will be Sherwin-Williams 7069 iron ore. Condition number two, the applicant should submit a visual schedule, which could be a photograph with arrows pointing to it, or a site plan, or, and a site plan, to indicate which buildings are which color scheme, and that is for staff review and approval. And condition three, the downspouts are to match the building body color. That's it.
And I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Gentman, a second by Mr. McAllister, to approve the colors as submitted with the following clarifications, that the color scheme be approved with the gazebo, trim, and soffit be color seven, or Sherwin-Williams SW 7043 worldly gray, that the rotating body colors for the buildings be SW 7045 intellectual gray, SW 7047 porpoise, and SW 7059 unusual gray, and that the trim and railings be 7069 iron ore.
That's just the windows and the rails. The trim is worldly gray.
Okay, my apologies, yes, just the windows and rails. Number two, that a, the visual schedule be provided, that these are photos and/or a site plan identifying the color scheme to be applied to each unit. Number three, the downspouts be painted to match the building base color.
And if I, if you would, Mr. Chairman, please add to number two, that that is for staff review and approval.
Oh, yes, and number two's for staff review and approval. Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Looks like not, though Teresa, if you would, do the roll, and again, the therapy is the pass side, there is, Teresa Paul, she wrote either yes or no.
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Maleski?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously, all in favor, none opposed. Now we'll move on to our next item, Charlie's Restaurant. Staff, do your presentation.
Charlie's Restaurant is DRB 000434-2020. We getting some, are y'all getting some feedback?
Yep.
Ansley, unmuted herself, but I muted her.
Okay. We are, have confirmed that the applicant is online and in the meeting. Ansley, you're muted right now, because you, we're getting some feedback, because you unmuted yourself. We'll unmute you when it comes time. The applicant proposes enclosing a portion of the existing open porch, create a hostess stand and waiting area with an accessible restroom. Currently, the hostess stand is located in the display area at the right of the, right front corner of the wine storage area. Waiting patrons congest that front entry door and spill out onto the porch. The existing restrooms and the kitchen are not accessible. A partial porch enclosure is the most feasible with, to solve these issues with no additional building footprint. That means that all existing site features, such as trees, topography, and parking lot layout, will remain intact. Staff recommends approval as submitted. On your screen, you should see the project site outlined in red. On the left diagonal is Highway 278. Sort of on the, on the right, at the bottom diagonal, is New Orleans Road. Does everybody, if anybody doesn't understand where we are, please let me know right now. Okay, moving forward, we're going to look at some, just some pictures of the existing site. This is the enclosure, that, that back wall will be brought forward, but the roof line will not change, and neither will the columns or the front facade. Again, another picture from the parking lot. A detail, just a, a close of that area that we're, that she, that they're looking at From the other side of the parking lot. The existing light fixture, sconce fixture, that will be relocated to the new wall. The existing site and building. The proposed renovation. Elevations, the proposed elevations, so you can see there's very little change. That detail. Again, staff recommends approval as submitted.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And now for the applicant, if you have anything to add to staff's narrative. And again, if you would state your name at the start, so Teresa gets it for the record.
Hi, Ansley Manuel, here to represent Charlie's Restaurant, and I do not have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the board, I'll start with Mr. McAllister.
I think it looks great, no comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Remke?
I approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Maleski.
Yes, approve as submitted, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gentman.
I have a question, and I can see most of you did, did, I did not see the physical brick example, I bet Dale did. Dale, did you see the brick sample?
Yes, it was at Town Hall, if I recall correctly, and...
Okay, so as long as you find that, it's, I didn't see the brick, and it's not in the pictures, so as long as you're fine with it, I'll be good with that. The only question is, how is the skirt side finished? The elevations and the detail that's up there, the AA3, don't really show if that's brick on the sides, or is that stucco? What are you doing on those sides there?
Okay, I would use the brick.
Okay, all right, all looks great to me, then.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Mr. Whitmer.
I'm good as submitted with brick on the sides, as we just discussed.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I'm good with it as submitted as well.
Okay, thank you. My only questions, I guess, were related to the front elevation, and where this new toilet building comes out. Is it engaging the existing columns that are there, and the columns just remain in place? As they are?
Yes, so the columns on that side become pilasters.
Okay, and, and the railing as well would just kind of sit forward, would remain there, but sit forward of the new wall?
Let's see, I've got to go to...
Let me get...
So the railing around the brick steps has been changed to a metal, powder-coated aluminum, and then the rest of the remaining porch that's staying intact, it would just be the existing railing as is.
Okay, but where the addition is going, I see now in the elevation, I don't know why I missed it before, so the railing goes away there, we just see the siding of the new wall.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have no other questions. I think it looks, looks good, and keep fitting with the existing, what we see. I guess I'll do a quick round again, just to make sure nobody has any other comments, so, starting with...
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt a minute to answer Michael's question, I don't know, Michael, if you have an idea, but it's an Old Carolina brick, and it's called Georgetown? If that helps?
Yeah, I'm familiar with that brick. That'd be very appropriate.
Yeah, my, my apologies for not answering you, and I made my turn, I thought it was an appropriate-looking brick when I saw it person. So just to make another quick round, I guess, if anybody has any additional comment, back to Mr. McAllister.
No further comment.
Ms. Remke?
No further comment.
Mr. Maleski?
No further comments.
Mr. Gentman?
No further comments.
Mr. Whitmer?
No further comments.
And Ms. Foss?
No further comments.
Thank you. So, Michael, if you are prepared, are prepared to make that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion regarding DRB 00434-2020, Charlie's addition. I would, I'm going to do an, I would like to do an approval with conditions. Approved as submitted with the following conditions. The brick is Old Carolina Georgetown brick, and it will go all the way down the skirt side to the left and the right of the stairs. I don't know if that was a complete sentence or not, but that's it.
Good enough.
And I'll second.
Okay, that was the only condition you had, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Gentman, second by Mr. McAllister, to approve as submitted with the condition that the brick be Old Carolina Georgetown brick, and be continued down the skirt sides of the stair, both sides. Any further dis- Any further discussion? You're like so, so Teresa, if you would do the call for the vote.
Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke? Ms. Remke, if you would unmute yourself?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes.
Thank you. So motion passes unanimously, all in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We would move on to our next project, Darling Eye Center.
Darling Eye Center is DRB 000773-2020. My apologies, can we confirm that the applicant is online? I have confirmation that the applicant is in the meeting. The applicant would like to change the color of the roof. The roof is currently a faded green metal roof. The applicant proposes to re-roof the building with one of the following standing seam McElroy metal colors. The choices of colors they proposed are for approval in the order of preference. And they listed galvalume, Texas silver metallic, silver metallic, and lead coat. SaaS is concerned about the lightness and reflectivity of these colors and recommends pre-weathered galvalume. Again, SaaS recommends approval of pre-weathered galvalume as getting as close as possible without being too light or reflective. The site, again, is outlined in red, sort of towards the bottom of your screen. Down through the middle is Highway 278. You can see sort of the half clover leaf there for- or the- the- on- what am I trying to say? Merge lane for marshland coming there at the top of the screen. The marsh is off to the far left. Does everybody have an idea of where we are? If I don't hear anybody, I'll assume so. Okay, moving on, we're going to- there's the standing seam metal roof that's proposed. Just some pictures of the building. There it is, from the parking lot. Yes, again, SaaS recommends approval of pre-weathered galvalume.
Thank you, Chris. Is that all for staff?
Yes, sir, it is. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. If the applicant is with us, if you have anything further to add to staff's narrative?
Yeah, this is Greg Francis with Acuta Company Construction, representing the owner. And yeah, we have no comments and we agree with the selection by the review board, the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to board discussions, starting with Ms. Remke.
I approve as staff approved.
Thank you. Mr. Molesky?
Yes, I agree with the pre-weathered galvalume suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gentiman?
Yeah, looks great. And they're going from a 5V to a standing seam, so that's a nicer roof also. So I'm on board.
Thank you. Mr. Whitmer?
I agree. I like the pre-weathered galvalume color.
Thank you. Ms. Foss?
I agree with the pre-weathered galvalume as well.
Mr. McAllister?
Also in agreement, I think the pre-weathered galvalume is probably the best.
Thank you, and I am in agreement as well. So with that, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion regarding DRB 000773-2020, Darling Eye Center re-roof. It- submittal is approved with the following condition, that the standing seam metal roof be pre-weathered galvalume by McElroy Metal. That's it.
And I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Gentiman, a second by Mr. McAllister to approve with the condition that the standing seam metal roofing be pre-weathered galvalume by- got the manufacturer, right? Peters- Peterson was it?
McElroy.
McElroy, thank you. So I don't think we had any really discussion that time, so I won't bother making a second round. So Teresa, if you would do the roll for a vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentiman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously, none opposed. Thank you. Moving on to our next Scott's Fish Market.
Mr. Chairman and Board, I also have confirmation that the applicant is online with us. So proceeding with Scott's Fish Market, DRB 000784-2020. During review for a certificate of compliance from the- from the town, inconsistencies with the DRB approvals from Novem- from November and December of last year were noted. The applicant is seeking approval from the DRB for those changes made to the structure without DRB approval. They are as follows. Three, gooseneck fixtures were added, the post on the water side of the structure. The fans were changed out to another fixture that- another fan fixture that included lights and in a galvanized finish. Three, six cylinder lights with a fixture which is fixture B were switched to fixture D, which is a galvanized hanging fixture to match the goosenecks. And I'll point those out when we move forward. Added- wait a minute. Added the specifications for the wall fans to the plans. So there were some oscillating fans, mounted fans that have been added. And five, the window was added there at the bar where there were existing shutters. And six conduits were installed exposed on the ceiling. So as you see, the red circle indicates where the structure, the patio covering is. This is at Shelter Cove. The top of the screen is the Disney Development. You can see the bridge on the right, the drop-off area at the Neptune sculpture is there at the bottom of the screen. If anybody does not know where we are, please let me know. Okay, we're going to run through some of the pictures. This is the gooseneck fixture that was added at the- at the sign here. That is the fan that was added that is in a galva- galva- galvalume or galva- galvanized, easy for me to say, finish with the light that was not- the fans that were approved by the DRB last year did not include lights. Those are the lights that replace up here at the top of this picture, the lights that replace the can fixtures that hang down. There is the window at the back of the bar, we're on the outside now looking at the back, that was added. There's the mounted fan that's- that again was not included. This is a picture of the can fixture that was approved. Of concern though, of SaaS concern is the conduit and how exposed it is. And it congests the structure and it was a specific condition that all effort should be made to conceal that. Again, just another sample of the conduit. Again, you can see the conduit on those main beams and the gooseneck fixture, again, that was not approved. And then the conduit running up the column. This is the proposed fan spec, the mounted fan spec that was changed. And you can see the window there added. Okay, SaaS is concerned because the NOA spoke directly to many of these issues. Be clear, the NOA from November and December of last year spoke directly to many of these issues for approval of specific light fixtures. For instance, that of the electrical conduit be concealed. SaaS recommends approval with the following conditions. One, all light fixtures not approved by the DRB shall be removed. Two, all fans shall be replaced to meet the November and December 2019 DRB-approved specifications. Three, the box fans or the mounted fans that are now spec are- should be approved as installed. Four, add a Bermuda shutter to the bar window, submit color to staff for review and approval. Five, electrical conduits and sprinkler lines shall be concealed. Submit concept, conceal conduits and lines to staff and one DRB member for review and approval. That concludes staff's comments.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And this may be a question for the applicant, I'm not sure, but you know, like, I believe the original submittal showed- was that the original submittal, the last drawing you just had? That right before this that you went past? It shows-
Yes, sir, those were-
Does it not show a ceiling applied to the bottom of the joists? So like, they created, I thought when we originally reviewed this, it created like a plenum area for all the conduit to be run. Not sure if that's plenum still there, it looked like in the photos, it may not be, but anyway.
The packet, Mr. Chairman, the packet included, I believe the packet included the approved plans from last year. They were stamped approval in the upper right-hand corner. I'm sorry, I don't have them now. I'm- I cancel them up if you want to look at them.
No, that's okay. I'll move on to the applicant, I guess, for thing you may have to add to staff's narrative. We still have the applicant with us.
Yeah, can you?
Yep, there you have him.
Hi, Tim Prost from PDG Architects. Do you want me to add on to Chris's comments?
Yeah, go ahead and add what- whatever you may have.
Yeah, originally we drew it with a plenum space and the conduit being in there. Fortunately, I don't think that's the way it's built, so there is no way to put conduits between the roof and the ceiling. Want to add that it is consistent with the other two structures we did. Even the other two structures we had drawn with the conduit in between, just like this, they got built with the conduit exposed, and that would be Buche's and San Miguel's. It is consistent with what's out there right now. And this is a different application than we submitted before. We added the- this application, we added the specs for the lights that the owner put up, which are the goosenecks. And then also the box fans, right? So I got the specs for that from the owner that they selected and put it on this application. So all those lights are in that- that first page. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Tim. So moving on to board discussion, I'll start with- Whitmer.
Sure. Well, I think around the board feels the same way, it's- and this isn't Tim's fault, but it's frustrating the review plans and then have them not built. Kind of feels like a waste of our time. I understand it's major surgery to expose the conduit unless Michael or Dale has the idea to do that. But I would be- I would like to see the fans and the lights that we spec. And I'm also curious, a Bermuda shutter, I think, was being suggested by staff to kind of block the window that was added that wasn't on the original plans. Like Michael and Dale to tell me if that's- I mean, it'll look okay. To me, it's going to look like a Band-Aid. I like what we approved. But I know that would be a big change as well. So I think I'm okay with that. I'm fine with the box fans. But the fans that we approved on the drawings should go back, the lights that we approved should go back, and the goosenecks should be removed. And the light fixtures we didn't approve should be removed. So that's my comments.
Okay, thank you. Well, I started in the wrong order, but that's okay. So I'll move on to Kathy.
I agree with Mr. Whitner's- Whitmer's comments. The most frustrating part to me is those gooseneck lights and the exposed conduit. We went over the conduit issue many times. So in general, I agree with all of staff's comments.
Thank you. Mr. McAllister?
I'm in agreement with what Mr. Whitmer just said. Especially think the light fixtures should be what was originally approved. Right now, it looks like we have galvanized fixtures and bronze fixtures. And I think in the initial, original submittal, all the fixtures were bronze. So I just think the light should be what was originally approved. And I'll defer to what our architects think about the Bermuda shutters. Don't have a strong opinion on it.
Okay, and the conduit?
And the conduit, I- I mean, like everybody said, it was a big discussion point. Like to see it concealed. I personally don't know how it would be done at this point. So defer to others' expertise, but would like to see it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Remke?
Now that this is all in, the conduit really doesn't bother me that much because this is kind of an outdoors dockside kind of architecture that would lend itself to exposed conduits. So I don't have a strong opinion. I would be fine if they left it the way it is. On the ceiling, I don't like it on the vertical post that we saw where it comes down the side. I think that needs to be covered in some way. The light fixtures and the fans, I agree with the rest of the board that, you know, we spent a lot of time on this. We helped them get what we thought would be appropriate, so I would like to see that go back to what we approved. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myleski.
Yes, I think it's a shame with the conduit for a new construction that that got missed because it looks like such an afterthought with it being a new project. Perhaps if they hold the conduit tight against the beams as they have in some areas and maybe paint it bronze to match the fixtures, then, you know, maybe that would make it less evident and tie in architecturally to everything else. I agree with staff's comments to revert back to the originally approved light fixtures. And I would probably like to see a sketch or a picture of the Bermuda shutter for staff approval. I think that's a great suggestion as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Gentman.
Yeah, I think everybody hit the points on the head. The big picture is here, they blatantly did things that weren't approved. And, you know, that's on them. So I want to see it the way it was approved. And it looks, it really looks bad. I mean, to Debbie's point, the stuff in the ceiling, eh, you know, okay, it's not the worst thing in the world. But how it wraps around the columns, it's, it's a total 100% afterthought that wasn't thought through. So I want it, I want it, I'm going to vote against this or whatever the vote is to, I want it back the way it's supposed to be. And that needs to be a bigger point the board needs to put out there, I think. That if somebody comes in with a tiny change that, you know, hey, this window got a foot bigger because that's the only size we could get. Okay, I'm for that. But this is just not that condition. And the window on the side, it doesn't even, you know, that window should architecturally, if you're going to put a window there, it should have been the same size as the roll-up bar that's right to the, it's to the left of it. It's just a totally inappropriate window that wasn't approved. So I think the, it needs to be changed to two windows that were the shutter size, that they want windows there with the approved shutters on them, or they just put the approved shutters on. So I like, I don't like anything about this. So I'll be quiet now.
Thank you. You know, moving on to my thoughts, I guess. Yeah, I'm concerned as well that, yeah, we make, you know, we did give an approval, then when things just go totally against it, it's a little frustrating. And I realize, yes, this is Tim's fault. Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of leaving the conduit all haphazard as it is. As the point of that the ceiling, at least it is great, running in a straight line, yeah, where it's coming down columns, working around beams and things. It's, it's just a bit disturbing as far as, and as far as rather seeing, yes, the fixtures that were approved. I don't recall if this is more fixtures than what were originally approved. I get, if it is, I'd get concerned then about total lumens and that's getting to be brighter than what's allowed by the LMO. On the new window that was added to the bar, I think Michael made an excellent point that it would look more fitting at least the head of the window is to match the head of the, of the coiling opening. But if it was one large, like Bermuda shutter maybe coming down over, it might be more appealing. I didn't think, you know, originally the structure didn't really fit with the rest of filter toge anyway, just the bar on its own before all this was done. At least the new roofing coming in over it helped tie it in. But this one end wall is still the one piece that just, it never really fit and seems odd. But I think adding, probably adding a Bermuda shutter that over that window might help. Yeah, same on the galvanized fixtures. And, and the wood structure, I thought, was it supposed to be, receive a solid stain? And is it just not gotten it yet because it's pressure treated? Or is this the end product? It looks like it's just the raw wood. Is that right, Tim?
Yeah, that's right. That's how all of them are. That's how Buche's and San Miguel's are. They match exactly what's there. Yeah, we didn't have a stain. This is how it was supposed to be.
I don't know why I thought San Miguel's did have a stain. But the application had a, when we, what we originally reviewed noted it to be stained, a semi-solid stain to match the existing windows, it said.
I don't believe so. I mean, we always had it this way as far as I can remember. There have been quite a bit of changes on it.
What's that?
It was always intended to match the other structures. Same roofing, same, same clear finish.
Okay. For some reason, I thought the San Miguel's, and I walked by it, I thought it had a darker, but maybe it's just because of age.
It could be. I'm almost 100% sure.
Okay, that's not as big of a
I think the original, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's this.
Okay. I guess that's not as big of a concern to me as, as the conduit being totally exposed and the light fixture total change and this window on the end. And if there are additional light fixtures, like the fans didn't have light fixtures initially, now they do. So again, is this going to be a potentially too brightly lit space?
So, yeah, I believe the extra light fixtures are the goosenecks. I believe the hanging ones are, we had lights there, there were the cylinders, and they changed them out to the hanging. The extra lights would be the four goosenecks and then the fans, of course.
And the fans.
I'm not sure that, that one with the sign, not sure if that's there. They moved the sign over. And I'm not sure if they put a light fixture. They could have. They moved that back over to the other side, I believe. I'm not sure if that one's there. But there are, the outside posts are the goosenecks that they selected and bought.
Okay. Like the originals, back to, well, right there, that's good. Like, and again, just going back to the original submittal, did say ceiling noted as stained grade B board. You know, just, I guess, when I read the original, I thought it's going to all be stained. And you're saying it doesn't and it matches. And I'm not, not sure I'm sold on it being totally all raw wood. But anyway, that covers it for me for this first round, I think. So we'll start back with doing a second round of follow-up comments, starting with, I was supposed to start with Kathy the first time around. I'll start with you, Kathy.
I also remember that the wood was going to be stained to match the existing trim. The window on the side, I agree, the top of it header should match the roll-ups if the window's going to stay. I assume they probably have shelving or something in there since it's a bar. It is odd standing there. I don't even think that a Bermuda shutter would help it that much. And I'm still going back to, I think, all the other stuff should have been, should be changed to how that was presented. Thank you.
You and Ms. Boss, Mr. McAllister.
For the lighting, I think at a minimum, the goosenecks have to go and the fans should be installed as what was originally approved. And so, so my understanding that we were initially expecting to have a ceiling that would conceal the conduit based on the approved plans previously.
What I recall, David, is that, yeah, there was like a plenum between the roofing and the, there was a ceiling then within the rafters that, that, yeah, that was the place for the conduit to run.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we drew a plenum in there. I'm almost positive that they did not build a plenum. So that would be the biggest issue of trying to conceal it. I don't know how to do that without the plenum in there.
Well, I'd still like to see it concealed. And I'll defer to our architects again on the, on the window. I do think it looks a little out of place, but I'm not sure what the best move is there. So I'll lean on some of you other guys to comment on that. But still agree that the fixtures should be installed what was originally approved.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Remke.
Um, going back to my original comments, yes, I think we should do the light fixtures and the fans as they initially were planned. I do like your idea, Dale, of maybe putting a Bahamas shutter over that window, putting the top of it at the same height as the header on the window on the opposite side. That might work for that. But otherwise, I think I agree with all of staff's comments that we need to get back to where we were originally. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Myleski.
Yes, I guess as far as the ceiling goes, maybe a suggestion, again, if we're talking about staining things, if they stain the beams a darker color and hold the conduit tight against the beams and have the conduit also painted perhaps a bronze color, that is one way to make it disappear. Or they could get some, one by two, something that more or less matches the thickness of the conduit and just go ahead and shoot that to their existing exposed ceiling and then come back with some more tongue and groove on top of it, you know, creating a little, little plenum area, if you will. The beams seem to be every bit of 12 inches or more in thickness. So to lose, you know, a couple inches to conceal the conduit, I take that back. In that picture there, maybe they don't necessarily look 12 inches, but they still look eight to, eight to 10 inches. So if you lose a couple inches, you would still kind of have the exposed larger beams and then be able to conceal the conduit, perhaps, might be a solution to, to hide the conduit. And a good catch on the window header matching, I agree. I think that that definitely should match the existing. And whether they put a shutter there or not, I'd really need to see a picture to make a better decision on that or just allow staff to, to make that decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gentman.
Um, yeah, I don't have anything other to add from before, other than to respond to the comments about putting a Bahamas shutter on that window. I don't think that's going to work. They need to be, the head of that window needs to match the head of the coil door to even be close to be appropriate. And then you're looking at this one big, long, wide Bahamas shutter, which I'd even question if that is appropriate. Most of the time, those are vertical in nature. So what was approved was two vertical shutters. So I would maintain that they can be shutters with no window, was approved, or if it's a window, it needs to be a window that fits behind the shutters that were approved. And i.e. matching that head height right around the corner. It just, it just looks so out of place. You know, and this is no bag on Tim for sure because he does wonderful stuff. But that's, and I know he didn't do that window. Because I know, I know they would have done much more. Yeah, I, so I'm not bagging on Tim at all because you guys have a great history of doing great stuff. But that's got to change. That window's got to change. And then the wall
Guys, come on in real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what if we had a Bahamas shutter that was broken into three panels and started at the head height of that roll-up door? Maybe having some kind of trim detail to bring it up to the bottom of that. Could that possibly work? Leaving the window basically where it is, you know, add more trim above it and have the Bahamas shutter start the same height, go all the way down maybe into three panels so they're more vertical, three or four panels?
Do you honestly think that would look good, that it doesn't match the window?
If it's above it?
Yeah. Your shutters, shutters should, oh, sorry, my dog's barking. Shutters should always match the windows, always, whether they're
I agree with that.
Yeah. And it, it'll, they'll look like dinky little shutters trying to cover a big window. That's, that's woefully out of proportion horizontally. So my answer, I would maintain, no, that doesn't fix it. You know, and again, this, this is a bigger issue to me that, I forgot who started off, but made a great, I think it was Brian, that, are, you know, are we just sitting here wasting our time telling people, this looks good? Yes, this is approved. And then they build something else. So that's, that's a big reason that if they had put in something totally beautiful and it looked good, I would consider it. But since they didn't do what was approved and it looks really ugly, I'm not going to, I wouldn't consider that window, approving that a window. So, and then, and as an example, there's a photo of the front door with the emergency wall pack. Go up or down, I'm not sure which way. Go. One more, that one. That just looks awful. That, Debbie had pointed out, I believe, that the conduit on the posts is the most offensive, and I would probably agree with that comment. And that's a good example of it. That just, that just looks awful. And it's the front door. I think in the future, Chris, that if someone is going to submit an exposed conduit plan, they need to have a layout of where the conduit's going. And they need to have it detailed because this stuff happens. You can't leave it up to a contractor. Sorry, John Myleski. But no bag on contractors, but
I wouldn't allow it either.
That's what you get when you leave it up to an electrician. He's going to go from point A to point B, and it looks awful. John had a great idea on how to solve the problem. You just have less exposure on your beams and it gets closed in. But I think as a board, we need to stand, stand fast on this. You know, it's, and I, and again, Tim, I know this wasn't your doing, but whoever it was, you can, you can relay our displeasure to them. So, okay, I'm done. Unless somebody has a question for me.
In response to Mr. Geneman's statement, staff did not, when this plan was submitted, we thought that the conduit was going to be concealed and that there were plans to conceal it. So
No, that wasn't, that wasn't a bag on, on you guys, Chris. I'm just saying, in the future, if someone has a note on their exposed conduit on their drawings or something, and it's really kind of unrelated to this, other than this is a good example, that we'll, I think as a board, we need to know what their routing is, you know, how they're going to, how they're going to make it look good. So, yes, I, I know 100% that this was all supposed to be concealed. So that's not any way a bag on you guys. So.
I didn't think it was a bag. I was just wanting to point out that it, it wasn't, it was originally supposed to be concealed. So, yeah, I didn't take it as a bag.
No. So to wrap up, you know, what are we approving here if we approve with conditions? You know, is this a, don't we just deny this and say, no, make it the way it was supposed to be? I don't know that this is an approval with conditions, condition. Is it, Chris?
You can either, you can approve it as it's, as it's, I guess you have a couple of, of options. You can approve it as it's built. That is your prerogative. It is not built per your original approvals. And staff, when staff, when I, when staff goes out to do the certificates of compliance, we're not going to sign off on that if it's not to the DRB approved plans. So that's why we're, that's why we're where we are. If you want to alter a portion of it, you can do that. You can remove the fixtures. You can ask for the, the light, the fans to be per the original spec. Or you can just, you can require it to go back. It is, it is up to you. I don't know if, if the, if the applicant has any I don't know if the, if the applicant has any comment or suggestion?
I mean, the biggest issue would be, you know, the conduit. It's just, you know, John, I think, has probably the most realistic thing. I mean, can we hold it tight to the beams wherever we can and wrap it and trim to match the beams? Yeah, there's just no way, without taking out the roof, to do it the way that it was drawn. And I mean, it's just.
But, but again, you know, I don't want to be the tough guy here, but they made that choice. They, they had to know that they weren't building this per the plans. You know, this is on, this is on them. And how are they going to fix the, you know, what I pointed out, that awful wall pack sitting right there? You know, it's, you know, there's ways to hide conduit. You can, you can, you can hollow out beams and you can drill and you can put in false ceilings. You can wrap the columns. You can do, you can do all kinds of things, but none of those are what was proposed. So what we saw was a plenum that is not there, and that's what we approved. I mean, I, if I, if I give in and say, oh, no, it's okay, then we've set an awful precedent here, terrible precedent. So if somebody wants to make a motion that says this is okay, I'll step back and I'm going to vote against it. But my motion will be, it's got to be fixed. That's what my motion's going to be, and if I get outvoted, so be it. But it's, you know, I'll, I will do, I thought staff did a good job with their comments. The only one I don't agree with is the bar window, which needs to go back to the way it was drawn. And if they want a window there, it needs to fit the shutters that were there.
Hey, Michael? Would you, this is my only, my thought about how we could make approval with conditions. The one sticking point is we need to see a plan back on the conduit, how they're gonna, how they're going to do a better job of concealing it, how they could do a false ceiling, how they're going to do it on the columns.
Yeah.
That could be a plan that comes back for, there's either one or two things. That plan has to come back for DRB approval, or that plan has to come back for staff approval.
Yeah, that's number, oh, sorry, Brian.
I was just saying that that's the, to me, that's the biggest item, but I, I think we need to, either staff or us needs to see a plan on what, what's being done.
Totally agree, and that, and Chris did have that on number five. It's staff and one DRB member to review and approve it. Item number five, so would you be, you know, if, sorry, my dog sees something out the window. So they did kind of have that covered with the, submit a concept to conceal conduit and lines to staff and one DRB member for review and approval. And I'd be, I would volunteer to do that.
Right.
But if everybody wants to see it, then that's fine with me, too.
I would be fine with staff and you reviewing it, because I think, I think we're all on the same page that
Yeah.
it, it needs to be improved. Mr. Myleski had a great idea how they do in the ceiling. We know what to do in the columns. They've got to do a better job. And I agree with you, the, I was looking at that window, and I knew something was bugging me about it. Proportionally, it's wrong. I think the window needs to just be, it's, we would have never approved that window, so it needs to go. And if they want to do windows, they should be the same size as the Bermuda shutters we approved. And that's just, yeah, there should be some, and that isn't punishing them. We wouldn't have approved that. We would have told them to do a different window size and to get the, get the top of the window to match the top of the bar roll-down. So I think that's the one way we could approve it on conditions if you're calling that.
And that's a great point, and you're 100% correct. That window would not have gotten approved drawn that way. It would, it's just wrong, you know, it's the wrong window. And I'm not going to put the screws to Tim and make him admit it, but that's my opinion. In a pretty solid, in a pretty solid architectural opinion, I'm going to say, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we did not draw it, obviously. What they did, just so you guys know for that window, so what they had there was the two shutters, and those were just, used to be windows. And what they did is they took those shutters out and took the center post out and just put a piece of glass on there.
Yeah.
That's how that window came about. Basically, what was, the shutters that were drawn before, those were the existing ones, and they were actual shutters. They were actual holes in the wall where windows used to be. And what they did is they took the center, I don't know, there was a foot left in between the center, and then just combined the window.
Yeah, that's what they
That's what I was told, what happened.
That's what they probably should have.
Yeah, it kind of looks like something like that.
I mean, I would never have drawn, I obviously would have drawn the header up to the same level, too.
Or you could just tell us. Or you could just tell us that Tom drew it, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, we've beaten that dead horse. So, Mr. Chairman, I, since the, these are all falling on me, mine is going to be, when I do make a motion, unless you change it to someone else, it's going to be all the conditions the staff have outlined already, plus, plus changing that window to fit the original drawing, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if they talked to anyone. I guess I could just do, does anybody on the board object to that being a condition? Doesn't sound like it. So go ahead and make your motion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding DRB 000784-2020 Scotts Fish Market. Approval with the following conditions. All lighting fixtures not approved by the DRB shall be removed. All fans shall be replaced to meet the DRB-approved specifications. Box fans are approved as installed. The, the window at the side of the bar is to be replaced with a window size appropriate to fit the originally approved shutters and should match the head height of the adjacent opening at the coil door. Number five, electroconduits and sprinkler lines shall be concealed. Submit a concept to conceal the conduits and lines through staff or staff approval along with one DRB member for review and approval.
Second.
That's it.
Mike, Michael, if staff could suggest, just for clarity, on number two, all fans shall be replaced to meet the November and December DRB-approved specifications. I just want to make sure that it's the November and December 2019 DRB specifications.
Okay.
Approved specifications.
All right. Board and Tricia, please amend number two to read, all fans shall be replaced to meet DRB-approved specifications per the November/December 2019 approval.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gentman, a second by Mr. McAllister, to approve with the following conditions. All lighting fixtures not approved by the DRB shall be removed. All fans shall be replaced to meet DRB-approved specifications per the November/December 2019 specifications. Box fans are approved as installed. The, or exactly how you worded it here, that the large window at the bar that was added will be replaced with window size to match what was approved and match the head height of the adjacent coiling door. Electrical conduit and sprinkler line shall be concealed. Submit concept to conceal conduits and lines to staff and one DRB member for review and approval. I covered it? Any further discussion? No? If Tricia then, you would do the roll for vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Myleski?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously and unopposed. Thank you. Moving on to our next project, Sunset Pavilion at Skull Creek Boat House. Staff will do your presentation for that, and do we have our applicant on the line for that as well?
We have confirmation that the applicant is on the line. Sunset Pavilion at Skull Creek Boat House, DRB 000959-2020. In anticipation of a certificate of compliance review, the applicant is requesting approval of changes made during construction to the design of the Sunset Pavilion that were not approved by the DRB final. Got it? We have proposed skylight, a raised roof area was constructed of same size and height. Two, omitted were the pole-mounted sconces on the front and rear of the building. Three, poles and trusses and louv, they left the poles, trusses and louvers as natural wood finish instead of painting the proposed black bean, which is Sherwin-Williams 6006 color. Four, added a gutter and rain chain to the eaves immediately outside of the restroom doors. They matched the roof. Five, added a privacy wall adjacent to the men's restroom. And it should also be noted that the, the half walls at the parking lot side of the pavilion were approved as, at the staff level during the DPR process. Six, added arm-mounted TVs to the interior corners of the pavilion. Seven, installed chandeliers that were not part of the approval. Eight, installed arm-mounted fans on the beams around the pavilion in lieu of ceiling fans. Staff, and that concludes the list. Staff is concerned that the contractor and owner made changes to the structure that affect the aesthetics, disregarding the DRB approval. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The elimination of the skylight and pole sconces are approved as installed. The poles, trusses and louvers shall be finished per the DRB-approved plans, meaning to be painted the black bean, Sherwin-Williams 6006. The gutter and rain chain, privacy wall adjacent to the restroom, mounted TVs, chandeliers and the arm-mounted fans are approved as installed. The app, number four, the applicant shall make suggestions to change, rework and/or otherwise obscure the galvalume conduit and sprinkler system for review by staff and one DRB member. We'll see pictures of that in a, in a minute. And the storage furniture shall be finished, match the structure. The structure, as you see on your screen, is outlined in red. That's the back gate of Hilton Head Plantation at the top of the screen. You can see that circle at the, there at the end of Gumtree and Blue Water, I believe, is the name of the development there on the bottom left. If anybody doesn't know where we are, please speak now. Hearing none, I'm moving forward. Just a cut sheet for the mounted fan. Cut sheet for the chandelier that was added. Again, not, this was not approved in the earlier DRB review. You can see that the raised roof that replaced the skylight from the DRB approval. Again, just looking at the, at the building with the notes from the architect on the changes. There's the restroom with that back wall, privacy wall. You can also see the rain chain and the gutters. An interior shot, and I would point out the conduits. They're a combination of sprinkler conduits and electrical conduits. Mounted TVs. You can see that chandelier mounted in the, inside the structure. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to run through those remark, the recommendations if you want me to, but that's it.
Chris, two of the recommendations were not on our, on the, we received, correct?
Yeah, we have a different sheet than
Yeah, the comment sheet I have has three recommendations, and I think you have two additional ones I did not see on there. But when it comes to it, our
I'm being, I'm being told that's correct, so I'm, my apologies. I don't know how that happened.
The one was, the one was about allowing the light fixtures and the, I forget what else, being, approving those as installed.
Thank you. I'm looking at the, the report now. Hold, give me a minute. Yes, it was number one with regards to the skylight and pole sconces. That was, that they should be approved. And then it was number three, the gutter and rain chain, privacy wall adjacent to the restroom, mounted TVs, the chandeliers and arm-mounted fans should be approved as installed. So it was just, those two were just clarifications of additions that staff has recommended that the DRB just approve as installed.
Okay.
What about the storage furniture? Number, number three, number three on this list.
And it was number five, it was number five on the list that I ran through.
Oh, that was number five? Okay. Can you go through that list again, please?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Number one, number one, elimination of the skylight and pole sconces are approved. The poles, number two, the poles, trusses and louvers shall be finished per DRB-approved plans. Number three, number three, gutter and rain chain, privacy wall adjacent to restroom, mounted TVs, chandeliers and arm-mounted fans are approved as installed. Number four, the applicant shall make suggestions to change, rework or otherwise obscure the galvalume conduit and sprinkler system for review by staff and one DRB member.
Okay.
Number five, storage furniture shall be finished, match the structure.
That was it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, one question for me. So you recommend the chandeliers be approved as installed. However, I noticed there's four of them, and they have 5,240 lumens per fixture, which is extremely bright. I think we had seen this come through on the original submittal. I would certainly have objected to a light fixture putting out that much light, and I don't see how it meets the LMO. But staff has no issue with them?
That-- no, sir. That's a very good point. Staff would agree with you.
So you would change the recommended condition related to-- because the recommended condition was those be approved as installed.
Yes, staff would agree and would change that to either eliminate those chandeliers or somehow reduce those, the lumens.
Or go back to what was originally proposed?
Agreed. Yes, sir.
All right. So now if we move on to the applicant, I guess, add to any thing-- if you have anything to add to staff's narrative. Is Joe there?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is Joe DePaul with Parker Design Group Architects, representing client and owner. We'll just start with-- to your question about the fixture, I had that cut sheet up in front of me. The bulbs included were 5-watt candelabra LEDs, which it says 15 to 40 watt equivalent. I don't know where that 5250 lumens comes from unless they're maybe adding the 16 light bulbs together, but even if you did that, you know, at that kind of 15 to 40 watt bulb, it's not gonna, I don't think, blow out-- there'll be a blowout light that's overlighting the space.
The cut sheet does clearly say 5,250 lumens, which is-- that's the equivalent of a lot of light bulbs, regular light bulbs. I'm just concerned about that. Anyway, go on.
Right, right. So I don't know if there's, you know, a way we could turn that light on and have somebody take a look at it before dismissing it. I do think that the-- actually, the colors came out very nice with the taupe on the board matted new walls and siding really blends well and matches closely to the existing Skull Creek Boat House restaurant that's right there, and then the refrigerators that are-- the built-in walk-in refrigerators that are on the other side of the property. So it kind of brings some consistency in with the other buildings on the site. And then the natural timber, the piles look very nice next to what's out there for the dock infrastructure. And then the lighter color that's not quite as dark as a black bean does a good job of blending in with the trees behind it and also kind of not being too dark on kind of the lighter background of the ocean and the sky beyond them that you can kind of see underneath the tree canopy. And then, you know, we had proposed painting the trusses the black bean. I think keeping it the natural is nice. It makes the ceiling a little bit brighter in there. So while that was not the original design intent, I do think the colors came out nicely the way that they've done it. The conduit and sprinkler system, I don't think we ever discussed during the DRB meeting. It was not a condition of our NOA approval. It's been installed about neatly as they could do it around the outside where they needed to. At this point, it'd be very expensive for them to go in to change, especially for something that we really hadn't discussed as part of the previous approval. We never really planned for any sort of concealed conduit on this one. It was always a 2x6 roof deck, overexposed trusses, and the post and beam style structure that just really doesn't leave anywhere to conceal any of this work. So I would ask for your consideration in that all this has been installed and is in working condition and would be difficult to make any adjustments to. And then the storage furniture is a movable bar that they have on site that they move back forth between here and the restaurant. Yeah, it's a piece of furniture, so I question whether it's really under the ARBs or the DRBs kind of purview here, but if it's something that we have to paint, it's something that we have to paint.
Okay, was that it, Joe, or anything else?
That is. No, I think that addresses the conditions that Chris put forward. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I'll move on to board discussion then, starting with Mr. Whitmer.
Similar to last project, we're kind of reviewing on the fly, which, you know, when you go rogue, you're-- I mean, if we like what we see, that's great. If we don't, then it's more expensive to fix in the field as opposed to paper. That being said, I do agree that the-- I think the color, it may get too dark looking at this. And I'm just going through design decision by design decision. And I agree with most staff comments. I do think the conduit could be concealed a little bit better or should have some review, and I liked staff's comment to do that with us, just like we talked about on the project before. And even though the furniture is movable, because it's gonna be out there most of the time, it should be, I think it would be nice to be the same body color as the structure. Most of these things, I mean, I was okay with. I like the look of the chandelier, but I think we definitely need to get a handle on how bright it is. Would-- I think it would have been something we would have approved based on the wattage before, I think, or at least in my opinion. So I'll circle back on second round. Most of this, I don't-- I'm fine with how it looks. I just wish we would have saw it on paper. So I'll come back, Dale, I think, after board discussion.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boss? Kathy still with us?
I don't know. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you now.
I couldn't hear Brian, like, the last half of what he was saying. Did everyone else hear?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I don't know what happened. I, I'm-- again, it's frustrating that we have to come back and do this. The pieces that stand out to me are the-- the new chandeliers bring formality into the-- and it actually draws your eye up to the roof, which then makes you really see the exposed conduit. So that-- I found that whole thing frustrating. This is minor, but the rain chain is okay, except you need to finish it at the bottom with the proper landscaping that has the container to put some gravel in there. The furniture cart definitely needs to be finished out. I'm bothered by seeing the TVs from outside, but I guess it serves a purpose for them. I'm okay with the skylight. Can't decide about the colors because, again, that lighter roof brings your eye up there and you see everything, whereas if they were finished out, the trusses were finished out, they could at least maybe paint the sprinkler system to match that, and they wouldn't stand out as much. Either way, I think the sprinkler system needs to be painted or covered up to look better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. McAllister?
All right. Initially, I was 100% on board with staff comments. Joe actually kind of convinced me otherwise on some of the painting. Now that we don't have the skylight, I think having the lighter natural wood might kind of brighten up the space, and I think I'm okay with that as is. I'm fine with the chandelier if it could be proofed that it is in conformance with the LMO based on wattage and lumens. So I don't know if there's a way we can verify that it's in conformance or not, but my opinion on that would hinge on whether or not it is. I do think the storage furniture should be painted. And can anyone clarify whether or not the initial approval and notice of action had any condition about concealing the sprinkler and conduit? I'm just curious if we could hold them to something that wasn't originally a condition of the approval. I certainly think it would look better if it was hidden, but I'm just curious on whether we have any teeth there.
There was no indication in the original plans that there would be a conduit system put in. There was no comment or indicate-- there was no condition on the NOA like there was at Fish Market to conceal the conduit. But again, there was no indication that there were going to be conduits there.
Okay. Well, I may circle back on that and have more to add, but that's all I've got for now.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Remke?
Looking at the picture that's on the screen right now, what are those black fixtures? Are those LED lights or are those heaters?
Those are bar heaters.
Okay. Any chance we could paint them something other than black so they aren't so dominant?
I would think with the fact that they heat up and get hot, that they would not be something that we can paint.
I see. Okay, all right. And then this conduit that I see running along the left-hand side that attaches to the underside of the trusses, is that sprinkler?
That is right. That is sprinkler, and sprinkler runs on the other side as well.
Okay, so there's just those two lines?
Sorry?
It looks like there's one runs to the peak also.
That, I believe, is a piece of conduit. But we had indicated this building would be sprinkled, cover sheet for our submission.
Okay. Again, any possibility we could paint it out a little bit?
Difficult to paint hanging pipe in space like that against all the exposed woodwork. Not saying it can't be done. I'm not sure that you would be happy if it was something that had to brush with the way that that would come out.
Okay, all right. And Chris, if we could go back to the picture we had a minute ago that showed the hanging television set at the corner of the building? That one. Capitalizing on our discussion we had just a few minutes ago, I see vertical conduit running down the column. How many places does that exist in the building?
I did not. We had a couple of convenience outlets around the outside of the building. I do not know how many there are.
Okay. My recommendation--
There are not a lot, but I believe they're in the corners.
Okay. I would suggest it-- I would suggest we cover those.
It looks like that may be the only one of them.
Okay. All right. So I would make the suggestion maybe we should cover that up in the vertical. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Debbie. Moving on to Mr. Molesky.
Yes. I guess if the keeping things bright was of concern, then I would think they would have wanted to have kept the skylights. The trusses with those exposed gussets don't necessarily seem like they're meant to be necessarily exposed or unpainted. And the trusses seem to be on maybe eight-foot centers. So I don't know, but if you go and paint those that black bean color, if that would necessarily make things look too dark, in fact, it might create a little more interest and break things up in the ceiling instead of it all just being so monochromatic. And then the sprinklers, it looks like that they are mounted underneath the trusses where it seems like there's a little bit of opportunity to place those-- the sprinkler conduit inside the conduit. Not sure off the top of my head exactly what code is. I'm sure it has to be within so many inches perhaps of the ceiling, but perhaps that's something that could be accommodated to get the sprinkler heads up higher within the trusses. And then again, if the trusses were painted that black bean color, maybe there's an opportunity to disguise the sprinkler conduit in a similar color, both to the black bean trusses as well as those heating elements that appear to be a bronze color as well. As far as the convenient receptacles go, I don't know if they're there for people to plug in their cell phones or whatnot, but maybe those can be placed, like Joe alluded to. We don't know how many there are, if there's just that one, but to have them all on the corner post only and perhaps have them on the exterior side so when folks are inside eating, they're not necessarily staring at them. Minor point. And the other comment was, and I don't know if this is a DRB thing, and this was before my time on the board, but the-- those blue picnic tables don't necessarily seem to be an island character. I don't know if that's a Skull Creek Marina blue or what that's about, but that's really, to me, what really is sticking out like a sore thumb. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gentman?
Joe probably doesn't want me to talk after the last one, but-- Okay, Mr. Molesky hit on my very first point is if they're concerned about the ceiling going dark, why'd they get rid of the skylights? Joe, why-- nobody asked, why did the skylights go away?
The skylight product, we had priced it as expensive. I know it was like a $30,000-- it ended up being like a $30,000 item. I think it was a cost consideration. I just know it wasn't installed otherwise.
Okay. I mean, that's a-- Going back to our previous project, that's a pretty big deal because it was a major element on the elevation.
Sure.
So-- Okay, what-- I'll move on. What were the-- what were the deck and the trusses? What were they supposed to be? What was the color?
The roof deck was gonna remain natural. The trusses, the rafters, and the louvers were going to be painted the black bean, which is a dark bronze color.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, and I think Ms. Boss probably said that. I kind of forget who says what, that the fact that all that's natural just makes everything else stick out more. You know, the heaters, the galvanized pipe. Now, in defense, we did not specifically talk about hiding things in this project because this is more of a barn, so I wouldn't really concerned about it if there's conduit. But if you are painting or staining, you can always-- say the outlet that's on the column that's bothering Ms. Remke, if that post were stained or painted, you could paint that conduit to go away. And that's a big reason I think all this needs to be the color that was approved. I don't even think that should be up for discussion. I think it needs to be painted. It just-- it makes everything in the ceiling stick out more. And again, the skylights, you know, they just decided not to put them in, and that really bothers me. You know, what does-- I'd like everybody else to reply in a second round on what they think about the skylights. The other things, the chain spine, uh, as Ms. Boss pointed out, it needs to function like a chain, uh, which means it, it needs to be tied to the ground and planted around it or gravelled. That is not an effective, uh, water movement, uh, item, the way it's in. It, it needs to be finished. It needs to be planted. The privacy wall is probably a good idea, and that's the kind of thing that if somebody comes back to me a second time with something's a different and say, look, everybody can see the men in the bathroom, we put this up, I'd probably say, oh, all right, great. It matches everything else. The details are consistent, approved. But some of these are just liberties taken for no reason other than it cost them $30,000 to put in a skylight and they didn't come back to get that approved. If there was not going to be a skylight in there, we would have just had you make the roof flat instead of having that little bump up. And bump up serves no purpose architecturally. Give an outside photo of the, uh, there's one from the front, shows it better from the street side. Yeah, that. That's not, is that vented or anything? It's just,
It's just overframed.
Yeah. It just doesn't do anything for me. So, um, I'm going to let somebody else be the leader on what we make people put in because that was, was approved. And I'm going to go with the flow with what everybody else thinks on this one. A little different from the previous project is the previous project, A, they said they were going to hide all the conduit. And some of that stuff in the other project, I could reach up and almost touch. A lot of this stuff's way up in the ceiling, so it's more of a barn structure. It's a little bit different. But I would like a second round on what everybody else thinks on, uh, the skylights and, and finishing it the way it was supposed to be finished. Everything else, I'm, I'm okay with the exposed conduit. If, if we don't like it, we being the board, that's really on us because we did not make, we did not specifically tell them it needed to be a certain way. We might want to consider that in future reviews on, and give people very specific directions on what we want to see with exposed conduit. But for this one, I think if the, if the, if the poles are painted the way they're supposed to be painted and you paint the conduit to go away the way we would in next year gutter, then that would, that should satisfy everybody, I would think for that. The chandeliers, eh, yeah, I don't really have an opinion on those, um, other than they weren't approved. So I'd like to hear my second round opinion on that, too. And then everything else, I think the board had pretty well covered. So, uh, so I'd like a re, a rediscussion on the skylight and the paint and the finishes. Please. And I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, moving on to my thoughts, I guess, kind of add to what you said. Well, just looking at this picture here, it's like, yeah, I noticed too, and I've realized the picnic tables are furniture. Do we have any say over furniture? Although what we saw when this was originally submitted, the picnic tables that were in place on the site have like a brown finish. So these are obviously all new, but they just don't fit the structure at all. It seems so foreign and I think it's very unfortunate that these, these, the tables are awful. The, the, the bar that's supposedly movable, you know, it has the, the shiny galvanized roofing front and, and the raw plywood back and the whole thing, in my opinion, needs to go or it's something they, they need to have you design a bar that actually fits your structure, that, that, that looks better with it. The, as far as the painting of the structure, I think, you know, the, the roof being entirely unfinished, the structure and the, I was going back and looking at the original middle, trying to find what, what the, the ceiling was supposed to be. I didn't find it, but I, I think leaving it all raw wood just to me feels like you, they just ran out of money and decided not to finish it like it was supposed to be. Right? And if it's, the trusses painted, the, uh, got to tell her and, and the, and the poles, even if it wasn't the poles, at least the trusses and, although I think it'd look all better if it was painted the same. And it's not, you know, the, the, the roof, actual, uh, horizontal members are a lighter color, the, the trusses, it would, it would set off nicer, I think, as opposed to as it is. It just looks like they forgot to finish everything above your head. So I think in my mind, I think the trusses need to be painted and, and then follow, of course, with all the sprinkler piping and conduits to paint it the same color so it blends away more so than just leaving it raw galvanized. The light fixtures, I, you know, as they are here during the daytime in the off position, I think they look okay. However, 5,240 lumens per fixture, that's what that sheet says, so that's why I expect it to put out times four. That's like 200, 100 watt light bulbs in this space. That's supremely bright. And I'm sure the, the boathouse isn't going to want to have it that bright for when they're having events out there, but still the point is it could be that bright and we're right on the water, uh, right next to a marina. I, I can't vote for this with the light fixtures remaining. In my mind, these light fixtures have got to go. The trusses need to be painted. As far as the adding of the wall at the toilets, agree with that. I agree with what's been said about the rain chain, bump the rain chain itself, just finish it out. Believe that probably addresses most of what I had. So we'll start with round two, following on comments. Did I start with, with Brian? Go back to Brian with what more you have to add.
Sure. Couple, I think after looking at this, I, I think I agree, trusses, if we paint them, it makes the ceiling, um, I think it's going to show the ceiling off more and you're really going to see that. And if that's painted, I think it'll give you opportunity to hide a lot of the, the heaters will blend in, the conduit, you can paint that and blend it in. I think that's the right look to give this more of an industrial look to let the, um, the trusses, the trusses being painted, I think will help a great deal. So I think everybody kind of swayed me on that. The ceiling being natural, I think will make it light enough in here. So that's one. Two, it's staring at the, at a bump out in the roof. Um, I'm going to go back to exactly what we did on Scott's. We wouldn't approve that just for a bump out that has no purpose. So I think it, um, I think what Michael said was exactly right. It would have just been a flat roof. So, um, it should either be a functional thing or, or go away. So based on the skylight going away, I think it just, um, should be one flat roof. That's what we would have approved. The chandeliers, I would be fine keeping them if staff approves, um, the lighting output, which probably means they're going to have to switch out the bulbs. So I think that could be staff reviewed because, and I agree, they want ambiance here, they don't want these things bright, but if they turned them, i- if they turned them up full blast, it would be, um, this thing would be glowing from, uh, when you go by on the water. I don't think that's the intent, so I think that, that could be fixed. The, the chain coming down, the, the chain just needs to be buried and it needs to be put in the dry well. That's, I was just assuming they weren't done, but, um, we should probably note just to finish that detail to make sure that's done. So that's just the cherry's baked, the, the buried and then added dry well. I don't think we have purview over furniture and Chris or, um, you can tell me that, but I agree that, uh, I don't like it, but, um, I don't think we have purview over movable furniture. But I sure would rather see something that's more, um, isn't that bright blue. And then painting the storage furniture, if it's going to remain, even though that's movable, I think that, I think we should make that, um, recommendation. I think that covers my second round of, and I'm only hitting on, if I didn't mention item, I think I'm fine with it. Um, I'm only hitting on the ones that I think we need to address.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Ms. Boss.
Going back to the skylight, I agree with what, um, Michael and Brian have said. If it's, the skylight's not there, then it needs to be a flat roof as to what we would have, um, approved. The trusses, I definitely want, would like to see them as well as the pools, um, painted. That will help hide, as we've been talking about, those heaters, the string lights that are running across there, um, even the chandelier chain. If the chandelier stays, I don't know how you can, uh, make sure that the client never changes the light bulbs back to something that's brighter again. So I'm going to say I don't approve the chandeliers. I agree about the blue tables. That was one of my first things, but I don't know if we have any say over that. Again, I'm, I'm okay with that half wall off the restroom and the chain needs to be fixed, the rain chain, and, uh, I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Boss. Moving on to Mr. McAllister.
All right. For the painting, uh, hearing everybody else speak, I think a lot of great points were made, um, um, in the camp that it should be painted as it was originally approved. And then hitting at the skylight, um, you know, like it was, I think Mr. Whitmer said, we wouldn't have approved that bump up, um, if it was presented before us. So I think it either needs to be a skylight or the roof should be flat. And as far as the rain chain, um, I think that's an easy thing to address, but it should be finished off, um, to prevent some erosion. I'm kind of in the camp as far as the conduit, uh, being exposed, it wasn't a condition of our original approval, so I don't, personally don't think we should hold them to that now. And as far as the chandelier, you know, I'm, my opinion on it still hinges on whether or not it's allowable under the LMO of, you know, aesthetically, I'm, I think I'm fine with it, um, but if it, if it doesn't meet the LMO, then, um, it shouldn't be replaced. But if it does, I'm okay with it. So I, I don't know how that could be parlayed into a, a motion, um, but that, that's where I stand on it, but I would go with the flow, whatever the board thinks. And that's what I have.
Ms. Remke.
I'm in agreement with all the recent comments. I have no other comments to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molesky.
Yes, can I see the picture, the exterior picture we were looking at that shows the bump out again? So, um, you know, I agree with everybody, with what everybody's saying, and just because they went ahead and did, it doesn't mean that we should concede, even though there's obviously costs associated with changing it. I wanted to see if anybody, maybe specifically Joe, if you have any suggestions on maybe something that could be done to the bump out along like the, the vertical parts there that maybe paint that a different color to make it seem like it was open because I, I really liked Mr. Gentman's, uh, suggestion. Boy, that would have been cool if that was open all the way around just to allow, you know, air circulation. I mean, it could have been a way to, uh, not necessarily do the skylights, but create a, an interesting architectural feature that, you know, back to everyone's point, should have been submitted somewhere along the line instead of just taking upon themselves to, to spend the money to do something like that and, and hope that we go along with it. So maybe there's a way to, uh, to paint the, not the, not the metal roof, obviously, but the, uh, the vertical part, maybe that black bean color or something to create the illusion that it's open or something might make some more interest as opposed to tearing it off and, and re-roofing it. And then as far as the whole interior goes, I agree with everybody that the, the trusses, the poles, all that needs to be black bean. Those are, those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gentman.
On mute. Yeah, I, I, Brian summed it up the best, the, with regards to the skylight is, uh, if there wasn't a skylight there, it would not look like that. So I'm of the contention that they need to make it flat, all one flat roof or put the skylights in. I can't really see the chimney in the photos, but I think the chimney's different, but I'm not going to. Is, Joe, is the chimney finished at the top or is it just the flue sticking out the top?
I'm going to have to zoom in on that picture.
I can't tell. I've been trying to zoom in. Your drawings showed a powder coated aluminum chimney cap.
Right. And I, I think it has a, uh, dark powder coated, uh, chimney cap that's just a pyramidal cap with a windscreen.
All right. Just not a-
I think that's what we're seeing there, if I remember correctly from, from being out there.
Okay. It, uh, it's just, that's a wood burning fireplace, right? Is that a true, is that a true masonry fireplace?
It is a true masonry fireplace, yes.
So that's not a metal, uh, spark arrestor sticking out the top?
No.
That's a question, sorry. Okay.
No, it's not. And it's, it's dark bronze.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, okay, I, I think it's fine, but I think that could be a question mark. If it's just a, if it's just a standard bark arrestor sticking out the top, I, I think we're going to want something a little better. But, nope, it's somebody else. Good. And a question, another thing on the ceiling is you'd showed fans and they have no fans. Are there ever going to be fans? As in air moving fans?
Yes, there are fans. They installed fans on the, uh, side there. You could see on the right side of the image. So they are mounted to the beams and-
But they, but the original, were those in the original, the middle? Because you had big, like big ass fans in the plan.
Correct.
In the original plan. And ones, you know, one's nicer than the other, which would be the ceiling fans, which give the ceiling another dimension and possibly hide some of the heater or something. Let me see if what's on the plan. Yeah, the original had, it showed six, like, you know, big ass fans in the ceiling. But I don't see the wall mounted ones as part of the original.
That is correct. You are correct.
You know, that, to the, to the board member, fellow board members, that's another change I don't think we picked up on yet. Oh, wait, no, Chris did. He had arm mounted fans approved. Everybody feel the same way? That would be my last question. And then I think I have enough notes to make a, a motion. But just asking about the fans. Fans, I'm out.
I felt good about the, I felt okay about the wall mounted fans as opposed to the ceilings just because if the chandeliers stay, and this is really the thing is, I, I didn't, I think the chandeliers kind of took the place of the, of ceiling fans, in my opinion. But that, it, it's definitely a change from what we looked at, but that, that's how I viewed it was the chandelier stay, having the fans on the, um, post mounted or wall mounted was fine with me, but, um, that's one opinion.
Okay, I want to, can I reply to Brian for anybody else goes? Good point, uh, but I'm kind of getting the vibe that the chandeliers need to go because we can't control what wattage bulbs they put in.
Yeah, and I would say if they go, then you have room for ceiling fans and it would be really nice to have the big ceiling fans in here. It would be a more upscale look and that is, um, what we approved. So I like that look. I just wasn't, I wasn't opposed to, um, So, I like that look, I just wasn't, I wasn't opposed to, yeah, and I could go either way. I think that's majority rules on that. I don't have a strong feeling whether the chandeliers have to, and not.
Okay, everybody just, everybody just please give me a, a quick indication, since I'm making the motion, on chandeliers, stay or go, and fans, stay or go. And if one's conditioned on the other, as Brian pointed out, please let me know that, too. Thanks.
Theresa, why don't we just do a quick, or I'll just do a quick round of everybody in the same order then, on those same two questions. So, Brian.
Um, I'm fine with the chandeliers and the wall mounted fans.
Okay, Ms. Voss.
I want the chandeliers to go, and I think they should be replaced with ceiling fans, and the wall fans leave.
Okay, Mr. McAllister.
I'm fine with the chandelier and fan as it is.
Okay, Ms. Remke.
Um, I could be fine with the chandelier and finds if, as is. If we decide we wanna go to the big fans, I think we need to go back to the six pattern. And if we're taking out those chandeliers, we don't have a lot of light in there, so we probably need to look at some lighting on the fans. So, I'm either, I'm okay with either way.
And I will add that the original submittal had different lighting in there that if it was provided, would probably take the place of it, and it was mounted on the trusses. So, my...
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt just a minute, if you'll notice on the picture that's on your screen, they have string lights on the, the beam, the trusses.
Okay. Which were not in the original submittal, but string lights are allowed for this type of event, or this type of space, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, may I say something else?
Yes, please.
Uh, the string lights are good decorative, but they're not gonna light up the room like it needs to be lit if we take those chandeliers down. So, I still think we need to look at different lighting if the chandeliers go.
Okay, Mr. Mlesky.
I would prefer to go with the, with the larger fans as originally proposed. What was, and I'm sorry for asking, what, what was the proposed lighting that went along with the original submission with the fans?
It was a pendant barn light. That was, they were spaced every fourth cross, and down the center and on each side. So, basically, as you're looking at the width, you would have had three lights across, and the total of one, two, three, four, times three is 12.
Joe, well, not to open up a can of worms, this might be something for Joe and the, and the lighting folks, but I would kinda, my vote would be, I would prefer to see the, the fans as originally proposed, and then maybe some type of, uh, scotch light attached to all those posts along the side, I think would, uh, would, would lend a nice look. That would be my vote.
Now, the original submittal did have the same barn, uh, sconces on the posts. As Joe noted at the start, I think those were omitted as far as this. And of course, the only other concern is, of course, when we add the, we add sconces back to the posts, we're gonna get more exposed conduit.
But if the posts are painted that black bean color, and then the conduit would, would be painted to match, and the, the fixtures would, would be the same, it would all kinda disappear. And I'm sure they could place the conduit perhaps on the outside portion of the post, so when people are inside dining, they wouldn't even necessarily see them as much.
Correct.
It's worth...
Yes.
Well, 'cause we're getting to design this on the fly, I just like the fact that all the light would be up in the roof, and you're, you're from the water, or from the boathouse, it's kinda more understated.
Good point, just as long as there isn't any flicker from the, the fans spinning around, just to make sure the lights are placed in such a location that, you know, we don't have that strobe effect.
And I will say where they had them submitted on the original submittal, if the fans were mounted high enough, you wouldn't get that flicker.
Okay, good point, Brian, and thanks, Joe.
Was that it, Mr. Mlesky?
Yes, yes, thank you.
And I guess, oh, since Mr. Gentlemen's gonna be making the motion, so I'll go next and saying, yeah, I, I'm one of those in the camp that the chandeliers, I think, have to go. I, I don't think the style fits the, the structure, first of all, they seem more formal for the structure. But regardless, it comes down to the point of 5,240 lumens per structure, I mean, per fixture, times four is 20,000 lumens out there, and there's no way to, for us to control that. I see this potentially being an extremely bright source, so I'm very against the, the existing light fixtures and the, the fans that are in place, I'm fine with. I think it keeps your conduits for those off to the perimeter and, and takes spure out of the ceiling. But if they went back to the overhead fans and lieu of the, the chandeliers and back to the original lighting, I would be good with that, too. So, are, are we to any kind of consensus, Mr. Gentlemen, to help you make a motion or not? Or do we need another pass?
I think I have enough to make a motion, uh, if you, if you order one, or ask for one.
Yes, please provide us with a motion if you feel comfortable doing so.
All right, any, any last gasp of air, anything before I start talking? Let's see here. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion regarding DRB 0009-59-2020 Sunset Pavilion Revisions. The motion to approve with the following list of conditions. The skylight was not installed. The bump up needs to be, there are two options here. One, install the skylights, or two, remove the bump out and make the roof uninterrupted. Metal panel. Number two, the poles and trusses are to be finished for the original approval. Number three, the privacy wall, the TVs, the arm mounted fans are approved as installed. Number four, the applicant is to paint the adjacent conduit at the trusses and the poles to match the adjacent color to help them go away. There is, the board is specifically not asking anything to be rerouted, as it was not part of the original condition. Before it, the storage furniture needs to be painted to match, or the furniture storage box needs to be painted to match. The chandeliers should be eliminated and go to the original approved lighting design. The temporary bar does not fit the structure. A design needs to be submitted for approval by staff and one DRB member. And it should be noted that it should match the colors and the finishes of the existing barn, of the approved barn, I should say. The rain chain must be completed, it must be buried in a dry well, and there should be landscape around it. The chimney, uh, the chimney does not appear to be per the approved plans. Please submit a photo, a close up photo of the chimney for further review by staff and the one DRB member. And, I check both sides of paper. I think I got everything. Did I miss anything, anyone?
Um, are we saying original lighting and fans? Are we asking them?
The fans, I took an informal tally, and the wall mounted fans seem to be okay with everybody. On a very close vote.
But to clarify, your motion left, said the fans as installed are okay, says nothing about going back to the original fans.
Correct, I did not say go back to the original fans. Item number three had the arm mounted fans as being approved.
Yes.
And if you want to amend that, uh, that may be amended to include the parentheses that the original ceiling mounted fans are not being required by the DRB, but would be acceptable if the owner chooses to install them.
So, are you wanting to add that, you say, or are you just throwing it out?
Add that to number three.
Okay.
We didn't, we didn't say we don't want the fans, we just say we're not making them put in.
Right.
And if fans are added, a touch sheet will be required for approval by staff and one DRB member.
Okay, that it?
I think I got everything.
Think you did, too. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gentlemen, a second by Mr. McAllister, and see if I can capture it. With the approval with the following, noting that the skylight was not installed as originally approved, and the resulting, with the resulting bump out, it was not approved, with providing two options, either install the skylights that were approved, approved, or remove the bump out for a flat unfinished look to the roof. For two, poles, trusses, and louvers shall be finished for the DRB approved plans. The number three, privacy walls, TVs, and arm mounted fans are approved as installed. Though not required, the original ceiling, uh, fans that were in the original submittal may be provided if the applicant wishes, but needs to provide a touch sheet for staff and one DRB member review and approval. Number four, paint the adjacent conduit at the trusses and poles to match for that. It can note that the, we are not requiring that any of the conduit be rerouted, this needs to be painted. Number five, the storage furniture shall be finished to match the structure. For six, the chandeliers that have been installed shall be eliminated and original lighting design implemented. Number seven, the temporary bar, uh, drawings need to be submitted for approval for a bar structure that matches the existing structure, both in design and finishes. Break, the rain chain shall be finished to bury the chain and provide a dry well and provide landscaping around it. Submit a, oh, here's the chimney, may not, may or may not have been installed as originally submitted and request that a, some, a photo be submitted, a more close up photo be submitted showing the top for staff and one DRB member review and approval. Catch all that? Thank you. Any further discussion? Like not so. Freestyle, ask if you would go do the full four vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Whitmer?
Yes.
Ms. Voss?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Mlesky?
Yes.
Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. It looks like the motion passes unanimously, none opposed. Motion passes, thank you. Looks like we were almost, what, three hours into our meetings, we have one project left. How does everybody feel? Do we wanna move forward with doing this one, or does anybody need a break?
I can stay.
I can stay.
Okay, good. So, with that, we'll move on to our final project, Parker's New Development Conceptual.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself for this project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitmer. Teresa, note that Mr. Whitmer's being recused from this project.
Yes, sir.
Now, staff would proceed with your review, presentation.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I have confirmation that which applicant? We have three applicants, or we have an, we have three people that are representing the applicant. Apparently, we have what we think is the main representative unmuted, and that person is Thomas. Thomas, just a li, a little bit of instruction, if somebody else needs to respond to a question from the DRB, please let us know who that is so that we can unmute them. Okay, moving forward, Parker's DRB 000610-2020, Parker's. The applicant is seeking to develop a gas station convenience store at the southwest corner of Matthews Drive and William Hilton Parkway in Sea Turtle Marketplace. The site is 1.47 acres and has a rough graded building pad, installed perimeter vertical curb, and in place stormwater facilities. Meaning, the stormwater facilities are part of the facilities that were installed for Sea Turtle Marketplace. The existing newly planted buffer and older overstory trees will be retained and supplemented to meet the LMO standard along the 50 foot buffer on US 278 and the 30 foot buffer on Matthew, Matthews Drive. Think it's also important to note at this time that the tree mitigation requirements have been met by the Sea Turtle Marketplace development. Two curb cuts which connect to the Sea Turtle Marketplace roadway network will be improved to service the site. The store facade and pump canopy will use brick and tabby facades and metal roof detailing. The almost 5,000 square foot building is accessible from both sides. Okay, staff recommends approval, this is, again, please note, this is a conceptual approval. So, staff recommends conceptual approval with the comments noted in the comment sheet and request the comment sheet be added to the NOA. So, the site, as you can see on your screen, is outlined in red. Sort of diagonally across the top of the screen is Highway 278. Matthews Drive runs through the middle of the screen from top to bottom. Sea Turtle Marketplace is to the left of the red out parcel, the out parcel that's outlined in red. And of note is the, um, gas station diagonally across the intersection that you all approved, I believe, two years ago, and is slowly moving forward. As well, as you can see, well, no you can't, the runway for the airport is just off the top right of the screen. Please let me know if you do not know where we are, or confused about the location. Hearing none, I'll move forward, looking at the site. These are pictures of the existing site, a lot of them are of Sea Turtle Marketplace, and the details, which the proposal is for this site, development of this site, to pick up on those same details. Sort of an overview of the site, in the right hand corner of this page, you can see the balance of Sea Turtle Marketplace to the left. Again, an aerial of the site. Site plan. So, again, 278 is at the top, and on the right is Matthews Drive, you can kinda see how that fits into that corner. Proposed elevations of the building. Staff is concerned about the, the amount of flat roof on the actual convenience store. And then at the very bottom, you can see the canopy, the pitch canopy. And then at the very bottom, you can see the canopy, the pitch canopy. Again, with these large canopies, staff has been concerned about what you look up, the ceiling of the canopy. And they have some architectural detail there. Um, you can see a sort of a indication of a beam structure. As I said, both, the building is accessible from the backside, so um, the top elevation, you can see the canopy, uh, and then beyond that would be 278. Uh, you're actually looking at the, the side that is perpendicular to Matthews, but I would call the back. You can see the entrance door there. That's the only, only element on that side that, that's actually you can walk through. In elevations of the building. A landscape plan. Uh, of note is the, again, the connection to the back entry of the building um, at the bottom of the screen. Can you all see my cursor?
Yes.
Okay. Then the pedestrian connection to the left hand side here. And the canopy that sits out in front between the convenience store and 278 at the top of the page. Elevations of, of the building with the landscape. And that is concludes staff's presentation. Again, staff recommends conceptual approval with the comments noted in the comment sheet and request that the comment sheet be added to the NOA.
Okay, thank you, Chris. And so if that is present, if you do have anything to add to staff's narrative?
Yes, good, good morning or almost good afternoon. This is Thomas Matthews with Parkers. We appreciate you guys. Letting us get on here and uh, continuing this meeting today so we could get some feedback on this project. We're really excited about this. Actually, um, am going to hand it over though to our landscape architect, Judd um, with Whitmer, Kiefer Jones, and then also have our project architect, Rick Wismock, speak to the architectural comments. So um, again, thank you, but gonna hand it over to them. I'll go ahead and mute.
Yes, this is Judd Carstens with Whitmer Jones, Kiefer. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, as Chris said, uh, you know, this is part of the Sea Turtle Marketplace. Um, the, the vacant lot that has been graded and has some stormwater infrastructure. Uh, we're certainly looking at, uh, the existing material that was recently planted. We're going to supplement that. Um, we're also just making sure, obviously, with uh, the Parker's brand and knowing that this is going to be the first gas station you can actually access on eastbound 278 on the island. Uh, making sure that it works well within the complex and it, and it functions. Um, I know there was indicated about the removal of the magnolia on the eastern edge. Um, it, it kind of falls within the middle of the parking lot, uh, for the access on that side. Uh, that's being done. Um, currently, there's two curb cuts along that edge, that southern edge. Um, we're consolidating those. Uh, I think in the initial planning of this lot, it might have been a CVS or something like that where there was circulation completely around a central building. Uh, considering we're pulling the building down to address that street, uh, we're consolidating that circulation, so uh, we'll have, you know, just two access points, uh, in, into this site versus the current three. And, uh, really, it's, it's the idea of, of, of making a high quality extension of Sea Turtle and addressing this corner. Um, we've tried to do that through all of the elements associated with the building and the landscape. Uh, screening where appropriate and addressing the building entries. Um, I'll let Rick Wismock with Wismock Architects, uh, address any architectural concerns, uh, or alternatives, uh, in, for conceptual approval. Rick, do you have anything to add?
It, it appears that Rick is unmuted on this end, um, and it appears that he has his computer unmuted. Now he's muted it. Now it's unmuted. This is a play by play.
Well, if, if, if it, if, I don't know, while we're working this out, if, if you want to go to um, the board, if, if, and he can, he can chime in once we have audio um, as far as addressing the, the architectural comments.
That, that's fine. Um, if, Rick, if you need to call in, um, you can do that. Or if you can, if, whatever you need, we'll make, we'll do what we can. Yes. Mr. Chairman, I think it's yours.
Okay, so we'll come back to him if we are able to. I'll start with board discussion with, uh, Mr. Gentman.
Caught me by surprise. Had done mute. Okay. Um, I, I think overall it looks great. I think it lays out well. Um, I think, uh, I read through all the staff comments. I think they're all spot on with what I would say. I think we have to put a roof on this. Uh, we made all the buildings along the 278 side put a full roof on. And I think this needs it, uh, which I don't think should be a big deal. Uh, something that would complement the, uh, the gas pump canopy. Uh, because there's that one elevation on A201 and at the bottom that looks like, uh, it looks like that's the roof, you know? I mean, it, 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 it all kind of lines up nicely and so on and so forth. Um, there was a comment from staff about maybe there's too much brick. I would tend to agree with that. Maybe we can mix it up a little, some, something a little softer. Uh, in, in some of the end masses or something. Uh, you know, I'll leave that up to the, to the architects. And the rear entrance comment about that being more glassy at that entrance, I think is a good comment. That's on the top elevation. Uh, seems like that whole thing wants to be storefront, uh, on those three door panels and the transoms. Uh, seemed to me would, would want to be glass sort of as they are on the front. Uh, but, you know, overall, I, I don't really have anything else to add other than what staff has, has already said. But I definitely think it needs a roof on top of it, so.
Okay, that it? For now? Yeah, moving on to Ms. Foss.
Um, I think I want to also say that staff has done a really good job with all the projects we had today. All the comments have been spot on and they've been very, very well presented to us. Um, I agree with what Michael said. This thing needs a roof, some roofing. Um, one of the biggest comments that staff made is that it needs to make sure it works with the rest of the Sea Turtle Marketplace in its look and its feel. And that, um, backside, the rear entrance and the three walls, I'm not even sure that a roof is going to help break it up a little bit. I think that actually needs to be broken up a little bit more. But otherwise, I agree with staff comments and I agree with Michael's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister.
I also agree with everything that's been said about, um, the roof and the staff comments. Um, and I'll just say, I think this is a great project. I'm looking forward to seeing it. Um, and seeing the, uh, shopping center fill out. I think this will be a great project. Um, just a couple of site related things. Um, I know staff mentioned the spherical bollards getting, um, replaced. I, I think it would be good if both the bollards and the bike racks could match the rest of the shopping center. Um, there's a little bit of a precedent that's been set, um, and that would give it a cohesive feel. Uh, agree with staff on the artificial turf. And they also had a good recommendation about providing a little landscape bed on the eastern side of the building between the sidewalk. I think that's great. The only other thing I'd add is, uh, on the eastern parking lot bay, to provide overstory trees at the ends of that parking bay. Um, I think right now there's just a crepe myrtle and a palm. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. David, where is that tree, that overstory tree?
Right, right where the, right where the cursor is and then up on the other side of those, those parking days. Just providing an overstory tree.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Is that it?
Yep.
Moving on to Yep, is that you, Michael? Moving on to Ms. Remke.
Okay, I agree. This is a great project start and I like the building. Um, roof would probably be a good idea. Um, on the backside, I like the fact that you've attempted to break up that huge back wall with the tabby panels. But maybe there's, I, I don't have a good suggestion, but maybe there's something else we could put there, or maybe we, we do it with some landscaping. Just make it, uh, a little bit more attractive. Um, and on the front side, well, and on the backside too, where I see the light sconces, they're in a little box and I, I was just wondering, is that also tabby? Uh, and how is it, it looks like there's a frame around those. I'd be interested to know what the material is. And then the last thing, sorry. Last thing is, uh, the little decor that's up at the top of, of the facade. Um, like five little somethings. I don't, it is that, are those tiles? Is the brick painted? Is it, uh, brick openings? Uh, just kind of curious what that is. Uh, but I look forward to this project. I think it's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remke. Uh, Mr. Molesky?
Yes, I guess, uh, I don't necessarily mind the, the flat roof. I, I just, I find that appealing, but that's just my, uh, opinion. As far as the canopy over the, uh, the pumps, I guess that combination, hip and, and gable roof, I don't know if that whole thing would just stay gabled, would, would kind of take away some of the mass and maybe make it look a little better because you have a more of a gabled roof over the, uh, a portion of the main building and everything else being flat. And then now we're introducing a gabled element. So I'd kind of like just to see that entire canopy be hip. Um, and then I'm definitely would love to see a lot more landscaping as far as maybe up against the, uh, the columns along the main building there and between the storefronts, I think would soften up uh, that front elevation and, and obviously continued around the entire building. And, uh, and definitely would like to see lots of landscaping on the whole site. I mean, I understand they want exposure and people to know that they're there. But, you know, what I really would not want to see, and, and those pictures look, look, look nice there. But just to really make sure those are nice mature trees that are put in there so it doesn't just look like you're driving down 278 and, and someone just came and clear cut the whole site and, and there's just a big, uh, concrete uh, building there. But otherwise, uh, looking forward to it. Nice, nice project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to me, I guess. Yeah, I think overall, you know, this is an attractive looking project for this corner. Glad to see something finally hopefully going to happen there. Uh, I'd like the right, you know, you've done well breaking up the building with the parapet, uh, stepping up and down. However, as others have commented in the past, you know, the design guideline does pretty much call for us to see predominantly a sloped roof. And to only have the sloped roofs at the center elements, uh, front and back of the, uh, retail building itself, I think is probably not enough. The doorbell ringing, so I'm just going to ignore that. Um, I never get visitors during the day, so. Sorry. Um, but yeah, so I think too, we need to figure out a way to get more of a roof on the, uh, more of the building. Uh, you know, and whether it's the entire building and I wouldn't see where it would necessarily have to be a full roof. I realize too, quite likely there's equipment on top of the roof. I, that would be one question I have of the mechanical equipment, the HVAC units, I, they're probably on the roof. So if we go to a fully sloped roof, where do they go? Uh, they're going to go on the ground somewhere that are we able to shield them? Will they look even less attractive there? But when we're looking at the, I'm not sure if we look at maybe an elevation of yeah, maybe the front and rear elevations, I'm not sure. The, you know, that's good. So yeah, like the, you know, I'm thinking here, I guess, of like, uh, these Starbucks and Lux just down the street by the Cheltenham Town Center where, you know, it doesn't have a full roof on the entire thing, but, you know, Starbucks has like a a roof on the high portion and there's some, there's a gap of flat roof in between, you know, maybe, maybe these two elements that have the higher parapet, maybe those get a full hip roof and you keep the roof in between and then the flat in between. Now others may think maybe that's just breaking it up too much. I don't know. But just a thought. But regardless, yeah, I think that we're, we're, we'll probably need to see more flat, more sloped roof on the building itself. Add anything else on the building? Uh, on the color board, I guess, that was proposed, the, it looked like the brick is, you know, so it's a nice looking brick, but then it's proposed to be painted? Is that correct? Where I saw that. Uh, anyway, yeah, if I saw that correctly, it looks like it's to be painted the magnetic gray, which is, uh,
This is Rick Wismock here. Is there an echo? I'm hearing an echo.
Yeah, we're getting an echo.
Uh, Rick, 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 this is Chris Darnell at the town of Hilton Head. Are you on your phone and your computer?
Yes.
Please mute your computer or hang up the phone and just use the computer. With those, we get a feedback.
I muted the computer. Is that better?
That is way better. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, to address the, the brick, uh, it is a painted brick. Uh, there's a product, uh, Rimavio has a whitewash or they have a mineral masonry paint. It would be one of those two to give more of a homogeneous, uh, aesthetic on the exterior. And a couple of the other questions to address those. The detailing above the storefront, it's just a recessed brick. And we would paint that a darker color just to give it some accent. And then the banding around the light fixtures is a Rolok brick. And it does have the tabby and the infill like we have on the larger panels as well. And to address the roof issue, yes, we have large, uh, package units on the roof. We have four centrifugal fans. And we have, uh, all the refrigeration equipment as well. So there's a substantial amount of equipment on the roof. What we were contemplating, as the chairman indicated, the two masses that have the taller storefront, possibly having the, a hip roof on those components and allowing the flat roof to remain in between the center sections and those components, that would allow us to still house the equipment up there.
And I think that's similar to what I was suggesting. And so, yeah, uh, even though I think in the past on similar sized projects, the DRB has, has looked for a sloped, and others may disagree, or that they've looked for a full sloped roof on the entire building. And I can appreciate the fact that there is uh, you know, you have like a kitchen type space here. So you have, you have things that need to come out the roof and you need to take them out somewhere. And then sometimes the, the mechanical equipment is better located on the roof, so I can appreciate that. And I, 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 I lean towards an aesthetic that might be, as you suggested, those two higher elements having hip roof and uh, along with the one at the center and, and then having the rest as flat roof. As long as we're not seeing the equipment uh, from, very visibly from, you know, from the ground or the driving lanes. So, and if it's set further back in towards the center and, you know, or the parapet's high enough to be shielding it, that's probably the key.
Well, fortunately, with, with the additional roofs, that would help conceal. But we also have a sloped roof where we have approximately two foot parapet wall on the front. and it slopes back down to about four feet in the back. And the most equipment is in the back, so it really wouldn't be visible.
Okay. Yeah, that would help. I didn't have my questions in the order of that. So I guess I'll go back to the landscape plan, I guess. And yeah, I mean, this is a tricky building in the sense that, yeah, you access it from two sides. It's really, really visible from four, but it's hard to create a backup house. Hate to take us back to the elevation. You don't need to go to the elevation, I think. But the back, the back elevation that had the storefront and the center and there's the brick on the side. You know, I think too, it does, even if it was painted a different color, I would suggest those doing it all storefront, but doing spandrel glass, you know, if you have things inside that glass doesn't work for you, doing spandrel glass and all that center except for the door. So at least it reads as glass from outside. Just one thought. And then going back to the landscape plan. This is always a big one for me, I guess, is again, between the hard surfaces of the building, it's just on the front and the Matthews Drive side, which are really the two predominant that are visible from traffic. There's not really too much landscaping to buffer the building. There is at the front to some extent, but it looks like it's smaller bushes, the low podicarpus and the PC, I forget what that PC is, just a ground cover. But the Matthews Drive side to me, you know, so we're, you know, we're coming along Matthews Drive and we got the buffer there, which is coming along pretty well. But you know, we have a two days of parking, a side park in the building. And in my mind, I always look for some landscaping of some substance to provide some buffering between the hardscape and the, and the building itself. So I would really like to see something between the parking and the building if at all possible. I agree with Mr. McAlister about the overstory trees in those two spots. I agree with staff and so on the synthetic turf. There did seem some discrepancy and I realize this is conceptual. It looks like on some drawings that the building's totally surrounded by sidewalk and others not. Or I think some elevations or the plan shows like these exterior doors leading to the outside on the Matthews Drive side that on the elevations make or somewhere else that shows them on the parking lot side leading on the left side of the plan. Just when we, at final, would that be clear? The, the, this is probably a minor point, but the air station for bumping up your tires, I, you know, it's basically at the near the intersection that they talk right at the plan. I'm not too excited about that location. It's, you know, those are often, we've seen in the past, we we don't, we get little control over what those look like. They're often not very attractive. Be nice if that could be located somewhere closer to the building or further to the back of the site and not front and center at the intersection. The 278 buffer area, it looks like most of what's new is proposed there is smaller plantings and it says existing buffer to remain. However, unfortunate, or at least appears to me, I can't recall exactly what all was supposed to originally go there, but the buffer looks pretty sad right now. And I know some of those plantings have died. So in my mind, I'd just like to, in the final, see this be beefed up a little bit more. Maybe it requires some more overstory trees or something. And I realize a gas station doesn't want that. You want the visibility, but this is Hilton Head and so we, you know, we expect to see trees and more nature, so. And then on the backside, I guess, or I think there were two two crepe myrtles. Is that right? I think. If I'm recalling correctly. And though a crepe myrtle looks nice in the winter months, it's going to have nothing on it. Just because that backside of the building doesn't have much breaking it up as far as windows or, you know, you're doing a great job, I think, overall, with like the detailing of the brick and the tabby and trying to break it up with that, but my only suggestion would be something maybe more evergreen on the on the backside where those two crepe myrtles were proposed. Going through my notes here real quick. And then just whatever more you can do to break up that south facade. And I realize that's difficult because that's probably the service side of the building where you don't need any windows or anything inside, but maybe it's a thing that you can do with the brick or other materials, whatever. And not too sure how I feel about painting, you know, using nice brick and then painting it all this magnetic gray. I'm going to locate it on my. I don't have an issue with the magnetic gray itself, but I think basically the entire building just being magnetic gray and all one material. Just rethink that, whether again, it's either not painted brick or some of it's painted or we introduce some other materials. So it's, otherwise it does maybe get a little too magnetic gray. I think staff made the comment about the gavel and roof. Of course, I think I generally agree with staff and other comments like the screen, what, you know, the propane canisters, screening those and that stuff. The big balls at the front of the store. I was curious what those are. And then the roof access ladder, I think that's shown on the south, on the south side at the west end. Or the, I'm sorry, at the east end of the south side, which is right near where you drive in the back entry drive. And my only suggestion is possibly could it okay, it's shown there. Well, that's better location. I was thinking it was at the other end of the building. So, and then the other, only other things, I guess, when coming through on final, any other site utilities like transformers or whatever that are going to be on the site and how those are screened or dealt with. So I believe that covers me for my round one. I guess maybe before I go back to to round two on other board members, just see if the applicant had anything to reply to anything I said or or we'll do a second round. Like not?
I, I've got, this is Thomas Matthews with Parkers. I can just speak to the, a couple of things. First, the air compressor, we definitely are, are used to hearing that comment about the air compressor being located in a very visual location. And one reason, well, really the main reason why we do locate it away from the building is generally that's used by vehicles that aren't, you know, necessarily shopping in the store or getting fuel. So we try to locate it away from those type of services and especially in a location like this where there is a lot of boat traffic and we expect to have a lot of people pulling trailers with boats or just landscape trailers, et cetera, this, this type of vehicles, it's, it's functionally makes it a lot better to have that located away from the building. So if we could locate it there and just have some condition to provide some, you know, landscape screening around it, that would be our preference. Just to address that and so ask for the staff and for the board to consider that.
If I could suggest, if I could suggest on that comment, Thomas, if and I can't speak for the board and the, and the board can certainly chime in, but if that's the case and you want to leave it there, then provide us a detail that illustrates a very specific detail that illustrates how it will be finished out and that might weigh the board's concerns. Does that make sense?
Definitely. And would that be with actual plant screening or would it need to be some type of constructed screening?
The board, the design guide calls for the, the structures or things like this to look good without landscaping and then the landscaping is added. So should the landscaping die, it's going to look good. So it needs to look good without the landscaping, but you also need to add landscaping to it.
All right. Gotcha. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Other, just to address one of the other comments about the landscaping with mature trees, we have in other circumstances in storage open in Charleston, gone above the required caliper to plant trees that aren't mature, just because our owner is very cognizant and concerned with mature landscaping and having a site that does look not like we, you know, just, just threw in whatever we could find at the nursery, but try to find, you know, specimen trees and shrubs and that nature. On the bollards and the bike rack comment, I'm curious, in looking around Sea Turtle, I didn't see that they had any other type of bollards other than wheel stops. Was there something specific that the board had in mind, other than if we're, if you're not supportive of the spherical bollards?
That was my comment, so I can chime in on that. There are a handful of bollards in the shopping center. There's not many. I'm trying to think exactly where they are. I know there's at least one at the Starbucks. That was a topic of discussion several years ago. They're bronze and they're just kind of a standard security bollard. And I'm sure staff or somebody could give you a cut sheet of what was installed there. And there are bike racks both at the Starbucks and in front of all the storefront, just kind of spread out. And there are another bronze fixture. I just think it would be nice if it just all was cohesive with the shopping center.
Gotcha. Okay. If, if we brought to final, if we just left those on the plan and brought photographs or can't bring a material sample, those things are pretty heavy. But if we brought photographs or, you know, just showed what the finish was like on those, is that something that would be a possibility to be considered? We, we like them because they allow us to, to not have to do wheel stops unless that's required by code on the island. It just makes it with, with the amount of foot traffic, walking in and out, people exiting their vehicles and walking in the store makes it a lot more user friendly to, to remove those and just have the spherical bollards. And aesthetically, we, we think it's a nice look.
And my experience. Sorry. I was just going to say usual wheel stops are required when a sidewalk abuts, a parking bay like that. I'm not sure how the town would respond to using the spheres as a wheel stop. But in my experience, I think they're going to be required in this instance.
David is, David is correct.
Thank you. I think, I think Rick spoke to the, the hip roofs being possibly added to the higher, the elevations flanking the, the central portion of the building. That's something we could look at and bring back to the board. And again, that would allow us to retain some flat roof on the building to provide location for the mechanical equipment. So I think the chairman had mentioned that and we can certainly look at that.
Okay. Anything else before I go on to round, I'll go, I'll go through all the other board members one more time, just to capture any additional comments, so.
I, I do have one more. The, on the east elevation, there'd been a mention to add landscaping there. Again, we, we like to have, that's the elevation, you know, with the cursor, the top elevation there shown on the screen. Is, is it possible in, in a lot of our locations where we haven't had the depth to do a planter or a bed, we've, we've provided irrigation in a small area for you know, big fiddle, not fiddly fig, fig vine or Confederate jasmine to grow on a lattice type of structure on there to give it some vegetation and some depth there and soften the, the exterior. Is that something that would be considered? To be able to retain the seven foot sidewalk?
I can't speak for the rest of the board. My, my general preference is still for a actual plant like a bush of some sort, though certainly the vine would be better than nothing. I, I just definitely would not want to see this large blank flat wall and then sidewalk. So I do still prefer to I, I guess I look at the site plan and I see where the, you know, the parking parallels the building, but the, the site does taper with Matthews Drive and, you know, you got a little, I, I guess it was questioning could the parking, could that side parking not turn an angle slightly to at least be able to provide some bit of landscape buffer between the building and the sidewalk? Just a thought. Not that we need an answer now, but everybody else may disagree with me. And that's why I'd like to, still do want to do another round for everybody else to add any additional comments and thoughts, so. Anything else, Thomas?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. With that, then I will do our second round, starting with Mr. Genton.
Nothing really to add. The question, the perspective shows the gas canopy is being a combination gable hip and the elevation appears to show a true modified hip. Say the front elevation on sheet A201 down at the bottom. That looks different than the perspective. Is, it's a small item and that may change by the next time we see it, but that A203 looks like that's a vented gable with a, with a lower hip and the elevation shows a modified hip or a hip with, with two pitches. So.
This is Thomas. I, I believe what that was, was our initial, we actually made an initial submittal that shows, it also doesn't show the brick extending to the, to the top of the column there. And what we did was we, since the meeting had been postponed a couple of times, we worked with staff to address some initial comments. That was, so that was our initial submittal.
Yeah, one, yeah, that's great. Just next meeting, just if everything, however you want to present it, looks the same which way, but other than that, I said, I think it looks like a great building. The putting the hip on that left and right element with the taller windows, I think would, would, would be a good direction. And then you could leave the flat stuff in the middle. It might actually help hide some stuff. So I would certainly be on board with that general idea. But that's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Boss.
Um, I agree with the two hip roofs and then leaving the flats in the middle. I think that'll also help break up this building. Sorry, my watch is ringing there. I also agree we need some landscaping on the east side. I think that if you couldn't get a landscape area between the building and the sidewalk large enough to get taller trees in there to help break up that side of the building, then I would be fine with the ivy idea on some lattice that will help break that side up. That's going to be pretty visible from Matthews Drive and even if we get a lot of trees out here, it's still going to be a very visible spot. So that'll break up those bars. David's right. There is bronze pylons or bronze colored basic concrete pylons with little domed top. They're columns that are throughout Sea Turtle. I don't know how many they are, but I think that would be a lot more of an architectural element than your spheres. I've seen the spheres work at Target, but it kind of goes with their commercial logo anyway. And I think the spheres in this case look a little And I think the spheres in this case look a little, um, cute, I'm going to use the word. And if we got in the, um, if you're still going to need the bollards after you get in the brake stops or wheel stops, I would suggest you definitely use what's in the Sea Turtle marketplace. And it definitely match, uh, the bike racks that they've got as well. I would even go so far as to tell you that you need trash cans to match what they've got. But, um, I'll leave that up to the rest of the board and otherwise I think it looks great. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McAllister?
Uh, don't have much more to add. Um, just going back to the landscape on the eastern side. Um, you know, I know it was a staff recommendation, so I think it's, it's covered in there. But, um, the minimum sidewalk width for the town is five feet and you've got a seven-foot walk. So you could potentially get two feet, um, of a little planter space between those two doors. Um, and I think that would have a minimal impact on your plans, um, should be an easy change. Um, and that should allow you to get something. Um, my preference would also be shrubs or something. I know two feet's a small space, but you might could do podicarpus or something. Um, but if you were inclined to do the trellis, uh, with some evergreen material, I would support that. Wouldn't be my first preference, but I would be okay with that. Um, that's really all I've got.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Remke?
I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaski.
Yeah, I agree with all the comments. I have nothing, nothing further to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I don't think I have anything further to add either after my initial one. So, uh, with that, Michael, would you like to make a motion?
I would love to. Okay, we go. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion regarding DRB 000610-2020, Parker Sea Turtle Center. Motion for approval with the following conditions. Um, condition number one is that staff comments, uh, are to be added to the NOA. Um, and I'm not going to go through them all because that would take a long time. So unless I contradict something in these next few conditions, all staff comments will apply. Is that good with everybody? Everybody understand that one? Okay. Um, item number two, uh, bollards and bike racks to match remainder of the, uh, shopping center. These are going to be a little jumbled in order. Um, overstory trees should be planted at the ends of the parking, the head end parking on the Matthews Drive side. Uh, additional landscape should be, or actually landscapes should be provided between the building and the sidewalk. Also on the Matthews Drive side, staff will review an alternate of lattice and ivy if you would like to present it, uh, but we have reserved the right to go back to our original, uh, requiring two feet of green space and plantings. Uh, relocate items, I'm going to be very general here. Items such as the tire pump station, roof ladders, transformers, anything that we would consider unsightly. Uh, relocate as inconspicuous spot as possible. And then where they are located, make sure they are screened with the understanding that things need to look good without landscaping, but landscaping needs to be added. I'm going to steal that directly from Chris as a quote. Um, uh, the buffer, uh, along 278 should be buffed or consider beefing up the buffer along 278. And please provide more evergreen plantings on the backside of the, of the project since it's a much shallower, uh, area there. And please note the wheel stops are required by the town of Hilton Head. And, and just, uh, this is not an official note, but, um, things that we discussed, like added roof on, uh, adding the roofs and things are covered within the staff comments. So I'm not going to repeat all of those, so.
And I will second. Okay, thank you. So we have the motion by Mr. Gentman, second by Mr. McAllister to approve with following conditions. Uh, include the staff comment, or the staff comments shall be included in the NOA and adequately addressed by the applicant in the final application. Uh, bollards and bike racks, uh, shall match those provided at the rest of the shopping center. Overstory trees, uh, should be added at the ends of the head end parking at, based into Matthews Drive. Um, landscaping should be provided between the building and the sidewalk at the Matthews Drive side of the building on the east side. Uh, as an alternate staff could, uh, review possibilities to add ivy, but the first preference is landscaping. Uh, tire pump station, roof ladders, transformers, et cetera, they'll be located. Or anything that's considered potentially unsightly should be located in an out of the way, uh, spot and landscape screening provided. Uh, the buffer along 278 should be beefed up. Uh, provide more evergreens, uh, landscaping at the backside of the building. Just to note that wheel stops are required by the town. Capture it all? Okay, any further discussion? Board? Like not? So Teresa, if you would do the roll vote.
Yes, sir. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Strecker?
Yes.
Mr. McAllister?
Yes.
Ms. Remke?
Yes.
Mr. Malaski?
Yes.
Mr. Gentman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looks like the motion passes unanimously with none opposed. That, um, is approved. Believe that takes us through all our projects for today, correct?
That's, that's correct. If, if I could just add, um, thank you all for your patience. I think this went better, well, as good as we had expected, maybe even better. Um, and FYI, there is no, there is currently no plan for the next, after Friday, there is no, there is currently no plan for another virtual meeting, meaning I don't know when the next one will be. Um, I, I think staff is and council is waiting to see how this one goes. Um, so I'll keep you posted, but I am aware of, uh, requests not to do it on Wednesday. Um, and we'll, we'll do that as much as possible. It probably won't be on Tuesday because currently town council is holding meetings on Tuesday. But other than that, I don't have anything else. Go ahead.
Thank you. And yeah, I would just like to add, thanks to you and Teresa and, uh, Dyleen, uh, who are brilliant staff there. I mean, you've done a lot to try to make sure that this went as smoothly as it could. Um, I know we had a lot of discussions beforehand. I was myself concerned about how well this would go when, you know, normally in the meeting where we have a lot of back and forth. And I, I, I think too, it went pretty well overall. I, uh, certainly better than I thought it would. Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Thank, I want to say thank goodness for the mute button. When your doorbell rang, my dog started barking.
Unfortunately, I couldn't mute it when I was in the middle of talking.
My dogs, my dogs were quiet, which means on Friday they won't be, so.
Okay, well, with that, I guess, meeting adjourned?
All right.
Thank you.
See you Friday.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, everyone.